Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, November 15, 2023. Karen, can you call the roll?
Trustee Bradrick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia again?
Present.
Trustee Harris?
Present.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Mahalik?
Here.
Trustee Morales?
Here.
Trustee Ellis?
Here.
Trustee Bezanski?
Present.
We have a quorum.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting. Those of you who are here for the first time, and you can smile and wave, and just for the camera purposes only. And like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Dr. Numul, can you lead the pledge?
Oh, absolutely, Chairman. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And on 1.1, Communications, Kelly Roder Tannelli.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and our JJC community. I am thrilled once again to stand before you and highlight another really great partnership that JJC has with the community organization. And this month, we'd love to talk to you a little bit about the Joliet Latino Economic Development Association. And we do have Diana Viveras, who's the Program Manager here with us tonight, to share some of those successes. And I just want to share with you that I first met with the Board President of LEDA in early 2021. And that was because the organization was just starting. He understood that we had a campus in downtown Joliet, and just wanted to tour the campus and see how we could partner. So on a Saturday, I met Alex. We went through the campus, talked a little bit about maybe some opportunities. And I'm so thrilled to share what we've been able to do from early 2021 to now. And Diana's going to come up here and do that with us. So Diana?
Thank you, Kelly, for that introduction. Let me lower this down. I'm a little shorter. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm happy to see many familiar faces and many new faces. So again, I'm Diana Viveras. I'm the Program Manager at Joliet LEDA. I've been at Joliet LEDA for over a year now. So I started around the same time Dr. Numul started here at JJC. And I'm thankful to Trustee Morales for starting that introduction again. And I remember when Dr. Numul first started, he wanted to connect with the community organizations, learn about Joliet and the organizations within Joliet, and start a more collaborative partnership between JJC and Joliet LEDA. And so I'm excited to share what we've done so far with JJC, and very thankful for all the work that you do, and your staff, and your team is really dedicated, and they've really worked very well with us this past year that I've been working with LEDA as well. And so one of them is our partnership with JJC sponsoring our Latino Music and Food Festival, which was known as the Latino Music and Food Festival, but now is Fiesta en la calle. So this is our biggest fundraiser in the year, and it goes back to supporting our programming to help small businesses in the community and entrepreneurs. And so we've been working with JJC for the past two years, and each year, you've brought students from the Latinos Unidos to also volunteer and participate in the event, which we're very grateful for. And then also, very grateful for your Entrepreneur and Business Center. We work very closely with Dr. Santiago and Brian Kincaid and their team. This past year, we've done many workshops. We know that they're putting on workshops throughout the year, but they make an effort to put them on in Spanish in partnership with LEDA. And so we've been able to put on two big workshops in Spanish, but also very excited to announce that today, we're completing our second cohort in the Business Success Academy with JJC. And so this is completely in Spanish, and at no cost to the business owners. And so the first cohort, we were able to successfully start three businesses, and we're working with the rest of the businesses that are part, which is a group of 15 participants for each cohort. And so we did a ribbon cutting for one of the restaurants in Lockport a couple weeks ago, and then another cleaning service company opened their doors. So we're very grateful for that partnership with JJC in helping the Latino businesses in our community. And then we're planning on expanding for next year. We're already meeting with Ken and Brian on starting more workshops for the Latino community, completely in Spanish, but also expanding out to the Romeoville Campus, and making sure that we are working all our, both of the facilities, and then also bringing some events to main campus as well. And then another partnership we have with JJC, which we're very excited to announce is the Connect to Your Future program. So we're working with Patrick Hall, and he has assigned a student with us. And so he's great, and he partnered Mediam Bayana, who is a supervisory management student here at JJC, and she's doing amazing work with us. So we're very grateful to have her on our staff. And she's been great with working with small businesses, doing the outreach, and getting the experience she needs. And we're hoping to have her for another semester, and excited to see her continue her studies. And yeah, we're very excited for our partnership, and thank you again for all the work that you're doing in our community. And we are happy to continue on our partnership for the next year. And so please let me know if you have any questions, or I know I spoke very fast. Yeah, thank you so much. I have some flyers with information. I'll leave them up here.
We do have, trustees do have some questions?
Yes.
Thank you, Diana, for all of the support that LEDA does within the community. And I had met with Alex years ago when he was starting to found this organization. And you know, from things that he saw in the community and I saw as an elected official, you know, we agreed we needed something because we see, we have a procurement department here, and we have big contracts that go out to contractors. But one of the things we saw was that a lot of minority contractors aren't getting contracts because they don't have all the certifications that they need in order to properly put in a bid for some of these, like, construction projects, which these are millions of dollars that cities, townships, colleges, you know, contracts that contractors are able to bid on, if they know how to bid on it, if they are registered properly as minority, you know, business owners. And I know that that's something that we have discussed, and I have attended meetings with Dr. Santiago and you, and the entire department on looking at that piece of it, and seeing how we can grow it. My question right now is, and I know it's a complicated process, so it's going to take some time. But my question right now is, I know you said you've had some businesses that are now, you've been able to help, and they're moving forward. And just as an education, I know the answer, but I know that my colleagues may not know. And this is, we're an institution of education, and we're learning. So from the businesses that you have, and I know that many of the business owners are probably people that are still, like, looking, are asylum seekers, or they're, I don't like the word illegal, because nobody's illegal, but there's a lot of undocumented people, millions living in the United States. And I know many of the folks that come here as asylum seekers, and asylum seekers are not illegal. They all did it the proper way. So they came here properly. But there's other people that are undocumented, and everyone in America can start a business.
Yes.
And that EIN number is what you use to pay your taxes, and pay and file your taxes. How many would you say of your businesses that you've been able to help, and maybe a percentage, maybe it's 10%, maybe it's 50% of folks that are undocumented, but they are working and they are contributing to the economy of the local economy and the overall state? What percentage would you say are families that you've been able to help start a business?
I would say about 40% are either coming in with an ITIN number, where we assist them to get their...
The ITIN, correct.
Yes. And so, yes, we have a large number of immigrants that are coming to start their business, and we're supporting them. And then we also make sure that we're sensitive to their cases. And so if we aren't able to provide the assistance just yet, we're recommending them to other resources to help them.
Thank you.
Get to the point where they can get started. So we do work closely with other partners in the community to make sure that we are sensitive to each case that comes in, and just making sure that we are able to get them to that step to get their business started.
Thank you. Because I know, me being an immigrant myself, and having gone through the process of, you know, getting my residency, and then getting my citizenship, and so on and so forth, I understand. But there's a lot of people that have not gone through that process. They were born in, like my kids, they were born in America, but they are so insensitive to understanding the process that people that are undocumented have to go through. And there is a process. And they get their ITIN, and then they can start up, even if it's a nail business. But they're working, and they're contributing, and they're paying taxes. And I just wanted to educate my board on that, that just because you hear the word, and it's not a good word, illegal, it doesn't mean that people are illegal. And even though they come in undocumented, they still find a way to find their God-given talent, put it to use, and work legally, work and earn income, and pay taxes. So it's not like they're not paying taxes. They are. So I wanted to ask, and 40%, that's a good number. And thank you for all that you do. And we're going to continue to work with LEDA and support you, and make sure that we continue this partnership, and anything that I can do personally, or let me know, because I'm here to support the entire community so that we all are doing things properly, paying taxes, and, you know, just using our God-given skills to work and earn an income and give back.
Yes. And adding to that sentiment, so if you have any other, like, if you own a business, or you know somebody that owns a business, and they have a question, please send them our way. But if there's, like, a question that's for a lot of businesses, for example, "How do I market my business?", then we'll create a workshop on marketing, and we'll bring, we'll put it all together, and then promote it to the community. So all our events are public to the community, so you are all more than welcome to come join us in any of our events. I will give a shout out to our next social event that we're going to be having at the Slammer Stadium on December 7. So it's going to be a networking event. So I invite you all to come join us that day.
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you so much.
Trustee Bradrick has a question?
I want to make a comment. I just want to...
Diana?
Diane, I want to make a comment. I have known Patrick Hall since he was in grade school. You have one of the greatest people to work with.
Yes, he's amazing.
He was one of my religious ed kids. So I've known him growing up, and he's a very stable environment person, and he's a workaholic. So he's great to have, and we applaud what you're doing with us.
And he's doing great running the program, but also the podcasts that he's doing with Willworks.
The podcasts are wonderful.
Yes, we were on an episode with them.
So I just thought I'd give that comment.
Thank you.
And great work.
I'll let him know.
Oh, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Lee, do you have any questions for Diana? Trustee Harris?
No questions, just a comment. Ever since we were in the Leadership Development Class with the Chamber, you've excelled, and you've done a wonderful job. And I'm excited and happy for you for what you're doing with LEDA.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Trustee Garcia again?
Got a question, but a comment. Thank you so much for all the wonderful information. It's amazing to be able to provide key information that is crucial for new businesses to be able to get started in a language that is important for them, and might be their native language. So thank you for that.
Thank you. That is solely the reason why we started at the beginning. So we saw that there was a need in the community, and that the resources weren't available in Spanish for our business owners. And so now we're able to provide that, and at a larger capacity now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Mahalik?
I'd say it's a great presentation. Thank you very much for it.
Thank you.
Trustee Ellis?
Thank you.
So I have one question while you have the microphone in front of you. You mentioned you have three new businesses that just started, for our records and for any of the public that's watching this broadcast. Can you just name those?
Yeah, definitely. So Taqueria Los Molcachitas recently opened up in Lockport. I don't have the exact address memorized, but we have it posted on our social media. And then also SDJS Cleaning Services. So they were part of the cohort, and so we were able to help them get their business registered. And now they're taking in clients for cleaning services, and we're actually able to help us after Fiesta en la calle. They are the ones that helped us clean up after the event. And then also, one of the businesses was, she opened a restaurant in the side of Joliet. I can't remember the exact name off the top of my head. But she was looking for a commercial kitchen space, Rossi Valencia. And so we were trying to help her get connected with a commercial kitchen space. She went through the program, and then she was able to find a space and opened up her restaurant there in Joliet on the east side. And so I can provide that information afterwards, so we could add to the notes. And then that way, you can come visit and support those businesses as well.
Thank you for shouting them out.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Item 1.2, I'm seeking a motion to enter into a closed session to discuss items 2C1, personnel, 2C6, sales release of land, and 2C11, litigation.
Trustee Bradrick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bezanski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The board is going to step away. We anticipate about 45 minutes to an hour, and we will be back. Item 1.3, return to public session. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bezanski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.4, public comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
I do. Chairman, I have David Lozano. He is representing a community member, and he would like to make some public comments. I just want to read a little housekeeping, which is, as a reminder, Joliet Junior College welcomes public comments during its monthly board meeting per policy 01.5501. The purpose of this opportunity is to direct comments to the board on agenda items. Keeping in mind that the comments should be in good taste, and please demonstrate consideration for others. Please refrain from inappropriate, irrelevant, or disruptive comments. Each speaker is allotted up to five minutes to speak, and thank you for following this procedure.
May I say for the record that if anyone doesn't know, David Lozano is a former trustee, or is a student trustee. So welcome back, David.
Thank you, Trustee Mahalik, for referencing that. I appreciate that. Yes, and for some people who don't know me, I was the former student trustee before Josh Damborsky. I served right before him. So some people may not recognize me. That's okay. But it's good to be here again. This is quite a, this is quite a nostalgic being up here again. Oh, my. But I've come just to, just to say hello. I hope you guys are doing well. Good to see you all again, really, truly. And I also just want to come up here for two reasons. I want to, as a former trustee, and I also want to come up here as, because you guys have all worked with me. So you guys know my character. You guys know my heart. You guys know where I stand. So I hope you also take that into consideration when I say that I've also come here to support the protocol regarding the organizations raising flags. So I would highly recommend you guys support this. It's been big talk at JJC. I know I'm not here anymore, but I get texts still. I'm keeping up. So I'm still in the loop, and I just want to say, please support this. Really consider it. And I also just want to be up on here and recognize a specific trustee, Elise Morales, for, I just want to, you know, thank her for the mentorship she gave me during my time here on the board. And I also want to just, just say that she's always been a woman that was never afraid to stand up for something that she felt was wrong, even if it wasn't popular. And that's something I always respected about her. And as I've grown to know her over the years, I've gotten to know every part of her, everything, and I've really seen that she's a beautiful person. And I know she has the right mind on her. She has a good heart, and she knows what's right. So I've also just wanted to come and say that as well. And I also want to say, student trustee, to my student trustee, Ayesha Ellis, you're doing a great job. Hang in there. You got this. You're doing great. I love it. And whoever the next trustee is, I wish them well, as also. So thank you. And that concludes my comments. Any questions? Ah, no, kidding. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Item 1.5, a moment of silence. Dr. Numul?
Chairman, thank you. I'm asking, today I'm asking the college community to join me in a moment of silence for the following three individuals. Nancy Martinez, mother of Cheryl Crudup in our library area, Bryce Richardson, son of JJC Associate Professor Doug Richardson in Health and Public Services, and James Pasteris, father of Richard Pasteris, grandfather of Matthew Pasteris, and Nick Pasteris, all JJC alumni.
And I have two to add to that. One is for our former Chair, Bob Wanderlich, for health purposes, and his mother. They both need our prayers. They're going through a lot, and I think we need to give some special attention and prayers for them.
Item 1.6, selected reports. 1.6.1, Finance Audit Report. Jeff Heath. Karen?
I'm going to introduce Ray Kraus. He's a partner at Sickich, and he's going to provide us a short overview of our audit for fiscal year 2023. Just a reminder that Sickich has been our audit firm. This is the second year now.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. Wanted to give, as mentioned, a brief overview of the financial reporting process that occurred this past summer and fall. We started our preliminary work in the summer and conclude in the fall. We're happy to say we're here today to talk about the results. There's a number of opinions issued during an audit, and I'm just going to briefly cover those type of opinions. On your annual comprehensive financial report, it is an unmodified clean opinion, which is the highest form of assurance we could give as auditors. The other thing I want to mention, back in 2022, you received another Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That's in your report for year 23. Obviously, the 22, we expect, obviously, to have that, you have that same recognition next year as well. So very good to mention that as well. Also, there's an independent auditor's report, once again, unmodified. There was an in relation to opinion on your supplemental information, once again, unmodified. And of course, you're also subject to government audit standards because you expend federal and state funds. All your reports were dated on November 9. That's the date of acceptance of the reports. In addition to that, there's another opinion on internal control over financial reporting, because once again, you expend government funds, and that was unmodified as well. Then you have, in your report, in your act for report, the Independent Accountant's Report on Schedule of Enrollment Data, once again, that's unmodified as well, and that's according to the ICB Fiscal Management Manual. There's also an independent auditor's report on state grant programs. That's both your adult ed program and your family literacy grants. Once again, unmodified. You're getting a theme here. Everything was unmodified. It's a very great job of the entire finance team at the college. Then, of course, the last report to mention, the single audit, as I mentioned, you expend federal funds. You're subject to the single audit, uniform guidance, and that's also an unmodified opinion there. There were no findings to report. So once again, a very clean opinion on your overall single audit. We did test three major programs this year, which is the adult ed program, the HRF program, and of course, student financial assistance. So we tested over 81% of your federal funds, over $22 million of federal funds, and there were no findings. So very, very excellent job. And keep in mind, when we talk about these achievements, it's throughout the university, throughout the college. You're looking at the Finance Department, but also many of the other departments that work in conjunction with the finance to be able to produce these great results. So want to thank Karen, Jeff, Darryl, everybody in the finance team, but also other members of the college that assisted us during the audit. At this time, I entertain any questions?
Trustee Garcia again. Do you have any questions for him?
No questions at this time. Thank you for the information.
Trustee Mahalik?
No, I'd like to just make a comment. I'd like to say that I had something to do with this during the finance committee. I had nothing to do with this. It's all their work, so I appreciate the work. Like you said, the whole college as a team is perfect, and that shows that we're succeeding with our financial departments. Appreciate your report tonight.
Trustee Ellis?
No questions. Thank you.
Trustee Harris?
No, thank you for the report.
Trustee Lee?
No, thank you for the report.
Trustee Bradrick?
I do. In your letter to us as the Board of Trustees, in your second paragraph, you identified a deficiency in internal control exists. Can you please explain the concern or the reason for mentioning this that's brought into this? Because it says a significant deficiency is a deficiency, but you go in to explain the weaknesses or whatever. Could you please explain that paragraph to me?
There were none, there were no significant deficiencies or weaknesses. If there were, we would be reporting them. There were none.
Okay, because it says a deficiency in internal exists.
It describes what they are.
You're describing, you're describing what would happen.
Correct.
And you're saying then that, because I'm, we just got this, so I'm reading through. So that's why I said, help me understand what you're putting into print. So we had nothing that showed of any significant...
Correct, correct.
Okay, that's, I'm glad to...
And there's three levels of deficiencies. There is an instance of noncompliance, which is the least severe.
Right.
There's a significant deficiency that's more severe, more material, then the final was a material weakness. So there's all three levels. There's none reported in your reports.
Good, yeah, because now I'm reading the last sentence that says it does not exist, has not been identified. So I just wanted to make sure that we had nothing that came up. When you put something like this in print, I always like to know that we didn't have anything.
There was nothing.
Great. Thank you so much.
Sure.
That was my first question during the finance committee meeting, is do any, no findings? That's music to my ears, so.
Good. No, good. Good spotting.
We'd be required, if there's anything that rises to significant or material, we're required to put that in writing if there was.
Good.
And there were none.
Good, thank you.
Trustee Morales?
I understood from what you stated earlier that there were no deficiencies from the beginning, and I read that fully to understand that already. So thank you so much for the information. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
This time, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 1.6.2, an ERP update from Dr. Yolanda Farmer.
Okay, thank you so much. Dr. Numul, would you like to make any comments before I begin?
Oh, boy, I don't want to steal any of this amazing presentation.
All right.
But I will thank you for your role in continuing to be the executive sponsor, and, you know, also assuming leadership as essentially interim CIO as well. So thank you for your leadership. I recognize this is a huge, heavy lift, and I'm thankful that the college community and the Board of Trustees is going to get quarterly updates.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you, Dr. Numul. So, good evening, Chairman.
Thank you.
Good evening, trustees, and good evening, JJC community. So as Dr. Numul mentioned, I have the pleasure of providing an update regarding our ERP process. But most importantly, I want to tell you that we have two very special guests here today that I would like to honor. I'm not going to bring them up yet, but they're very special to us. And if you recall, Board, on August 16, when I concluded my presentation, I took a pause, and I walked around, and I shook everyone's hand to say thank you in advance for your support. So I made a commitment to you that I would continue to provide you updates, and so that's why I'm here today. So as a reminder, Board, as we advance the slide here... My advanced is not working. Do I have another one? Okay, all right, there's the... So will you have to advance it for me manually, Josh?
Yes.
Okay, not a problem. All right. So I just want to remind the board that you've made some significant investment as we start and move forward with our ERP. On February 15, you made a commitment to the college, and we moved forward with our independent verification and validation process. On April 12, we signed our Alucian contract. April 16, we made a significant change in terms of our RFP and ERP, and we hired some project managers. And on August 16, I provided an update for you. Next slide, please. So I also made a promise to you that I would provide an update in terms of next steps. So today, I'm going to share a little bit of our governance structure process. I'm going to talk a little bit about our established timeline and our project milestones, but most importantly, I'm going to also highlight the budget. Next slide, please. So when we talk about the ERP restart, I just want to stress once again that Dr. Numul and I established some really clear guiding principles moving forward. Number one, we want to honor transparency and communication. So when I provide these updates to you, I just want to stress that sometimes I may come in front of you and say... come in front of you and say, hey, guess what? This project is somewhat of a challenge. There are times that I may come in front of you and say, hey, the project is moving along beautifully. But I made a commitment to you that I will be very transparent and honest and communicate with you regarding the project. Most importantly, we will continue to honor the voices of our employees. Dr. Namua said it best. We need to speak to those who are closest to the project. So when I talk about the project governance structure, you will see a part in that structure that really talks to honoring the voices of those who are closest to the project. Leveraging our talent, we have some really smart people here at Jolia Junior College. We have people who are very committed to the process. But I want to remind the Board that you made a really smart investment when you gave us the go-ahead to move forward with our project managers, and you'll get a chance to meet them this evening. And then, last but not least, facing challenges with confidence. We know with any type of ERP restart, we will have challenges, we will have hurdles. But at least, I want to be able to communicate to the college community and this Board, we may have challenges, but guess what? We have the resources and the services to really help us move forward with confidence. So that's important to us. So whenever I present to you, I'm always going to remind you of the guiding principles or our project goals moving forward. Next slide, please. This feels pretty good, Josh. Let me have you do this next time. So really quickly, you know, when we made the decision to move forward, we made a commitment to hire two project managers, because we have two systems. We have Workday and Alucion SaaS. So, next slide. I have the pleasure of introducing two amazing individuals who will work side by side with us, who continue to work side by side with us, and they've hit the ground running. What's another word for running? I mean, they're running. And they've already gained a lot of support from the college community because of their expertise, because of their honest communication, and the foundation that we've provided for them. So I want to go ahead and have Dr. Dev come up for a second from Campus Works, and she's representing our Workday Project Manager. She's going to tell you a little bit about herself and her expertise. Dr. Dev.
Hello, my name's Deb Burak. I'll be the Workday Project Manager, helping the folks here at JJC with the next steps for optimization and standardization for the, for the system. My background, I have over 27 years in community college leadership as a former CIO. I also served as a project manager for Workday. And the two schools I worked at, one was a colleague school, and one was Genza Bar Moving to Workday. So I have experience on both of those pieces. Prior to higher education, I have over 15 years in industry as well, serving as a systems auditor and also accounting manager. So I have some functional and technical background that will help. So I'm hoping to work, we've been working with your folks the last few weeks to get understanding where they are with the different pieces of the project, and look forward to helping it move forward.
Thank you. I call her Dr. Deb. So, okay, the next person I would like to introduce is Lisa, Lisa Richardson.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Richardson with Campus Works, and I will be the Project Manager for the Alucion SaaS Migration. So that work is going to be interesting, to say the least. So we have a lot going on there, and it's going to be a little bit of a challenge, like she said, but there's also good parts to it. I mean, we have a lot already figured out. So I mean, we've looked at a lot of things that we need to be working on right now, so we're, like she said, starting running. We're ready to go. So my background in being able to help with this is I worked for a large retailer who has the most data in the world for 23 years, and working on large, complex data projects. And after I was finished with that, I went into higher ed. So I worked for the University of Arkansas, and I was the Director of the PMO in the IT area. And we had a Workday implementation with 20 schools in the state going to one tenant of Workday altogether. So that was an interesting project, so I learned a lot about Workday. And then I came to Campus Works, and I've been here two and a half years, so I've worked with a number of community colleges and different banner and Alucion-type work, and colleague schools, and other Workday functions, different, different projects, but all ERPs. So I've worked on several ERPs. So I'm here to help and hopefully get everything running in the right direction and make the SaaS migration as painless as possible as we can for all of your staff and all of your students. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh, you would like me to try this one more time? Oh, very good, very good. And the last person that I would like to introduce that's not with us this evening is Faith Fawcett. I want to say Farrah Fawcett, but it's Faith Fawcett. She's our Alucion Project Manager, over 20 years in the area, working with Alucion, and also has worked on very complex projects. And so, like, again, I'm very proud of this team and the work that we have accomplished in a short period of time. And so, Board members, we made a great investment. So once again, thank you for that. Okay. So really quickly, I just want to give you a high-level overview of what we've been able to accomplish in a short period of time since the hire of Dr. Deb and Lisa, and also working with Faith. So one important aspect that we continue to talk about at JJC regarding the ERP restart is that we have to continue to listen. We have to listen to our team, we have to listen to their insightfulness and information. So the first thing they did was conduct what we call discovery tours. So they sat with all the staff members practically, representing all the different types of divisions, to really get their insight regarding where we stand right now with our ERP system. They've been reviewing our SOWs. I thought, Kissel, you and I did a really thorough job, but they're doing even a better job sometimes, looking at the SOW. And we also are re-engaging our Workday stakeholders. One thing that I did not know is that we have what we call a Workday Customer Success Manager. So we're working with that individual. Her name is Health Hart Miller, Hart Miller. So we're working with her to really understand what additional resources they can offer us at Workday for free. And then, lastly but not least, we've been working and meeting weekly with me, with the employees, the project manager, et cetera, doing a lot of work and doing a lot of listening. So I want to highlight for you today, I won't go through this very thoroughly, but I want you to pay attention to that yellow area that talks about the advisory team. We have a very strong project governance structure that we put in place. This has been vetted out with some of our key stakeholders already. We're going to have our department leads, our cross-functional leads, the project manager, and of course, your steering committee. But the new aspect of this model is the advisory team. So the advisory team will consist of some of your directors, your deans, some individuals who are close to the project, to provide great insight to the steering committee before we make some of those key decisions at the college. So if you notice with the steering committee, the steering committee really represents the college administration. We're responsible for really looking at the budget, the project scope, resources, and policy, okay? But new model is that advisory team. We really want to lean into those individuals to provide us insight regarding the project. So, Trustee Broderick, you'll be happy for this. I know you've been asking for milestones and timelines. So I want to stress to the Board today, keep in mind with Workday, we're already live with Workday. So it's all about making sure we scale up to optimize the system that we have, to ensure that it continues to provide the support that we need. So I want to thank Dr. Deb for putting this together. It is somewhat of milestones. One thing that you will notice that is coming up very shortly is the WD 2021 release. That's an opportunity when Workday will highlight new changes in their system, so we're already getting geared up for that quickly. And then also, once again, we wanted to highlight somewhat what we call milestones and timelines. Just want to stress to the Board, but this is a little fluid. We're still working through some critical dates and critical milestones for this one. But I want to stress to you that we're in the process right now, initiating a lot of conversations with our staff members to ensure that they're ready for implementation. And last but not least, I want to call your attention to the budget. I made a commitment to you to share with you the budget that we put together, and in your packet is an overview of the budget. If you notice, under Board Action, the Board has already committed to our Alucion contract and, of course, our ERP project managers. We are requesting additional resources, but again, just additional, just in case, we call it contingency, I'm being full disclosure here with the Board, for backfill, for resources. We made a commitment also when we did our IVNV that we would do a checkup with Campus Works, et cetera, all right? So I wanted to share this information with you today. But as we move forward with our ERP, please understand, I have a little statement here that, you know, we may have some unexpected expenses. We hope not, but we will continue to manage our resources effectively to really support the project. At this time, Chairman, I will entertain any questions.
Trustee Harris, do you have any questions?
No, but thanks for the great report, and I'm glad that you put the resources or the over amount in there so that it's there in case you need it and you have to lag and ask for it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Lee.
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Broderick.
You know I do.
You have a question, okay.
I have a couple.
Sure.
Okay, we know that the updates from colleague weren't there. In the timeline, do you have anything related to the updates that need to go in to update the information so that it's not garbage in, garbage out? Because 2017 is when we had the last update.
Right.
So is there any timeline that will be provided to show us what's going on?
Absolutely, yes. Keep in mind, the timeline that I'm presenting tonight is a draft timeline. We're still vetting out a few details, but I do understand your question, and we will circle back and respond to that.
Well, I think that's critical only because of the fact that when you look at the systems, from our discussion that we had on Friday with ERPs and RFPs.
Sure.
It was critical that we didn't, that we did start at a good point.
Right.
And if you didn't, it was more of a time lag than anything else.
Sure.
And then, it was also brought up too, and I know Dr. Namua and I have talked about this, because the gentleman from Alucion, David, mentioned it, and I had already known about it, about another person that comes in that's underneath the project managers that coordinates with, to make sure things are functionally running. It's, what do they call, do you remember what they called it? It's a needed position.
Okay.
And David from Alucion said, we should look at it because it's going to help the implementation and the success of the system going forward. Otherwise, if you don't have somebody doing the checks and balances with that person, and they said, it's not a very expensive position, but it is a needed position.
Okay.
So David from Alucion is the one that mentioned it. I know he said it to both of us, and I can't remember.
Quality assurance, perhaps?
I can't remember the initials that he gave us.
Okay.
But I know that when talking to other CIOs, they had also recommended that you.
Is that, let me clarify, is that a position, or is that a position that's embedded in the Alucion implementation contract?
No, it's an op, it's totally out of the contract.
Oh, interesting.
Total. So I think that's something that should be looked at. And then, don't forget, and I'll tell the two ladies, since they're sitting here, Matt Alex from Beyond Academics, who led our thing, says he's willing to help with whatever because he's done the implementations. So if you need any extra free help, Matt Alexander, Alex from Beyond Academics, I finally got to meet him personally on Friday.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Morellis.
I have no questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
No questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trustee Mahalik.
Thank you.
Trustee Ellis.
No questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you once again, Board.
Thank you. Item 1.6.3, why we have you up there. Grundy County Expansion Update. Dr. Yolanda Farmer.
All right. Exciting times at Jolia Junior College, right? And so, once again, this is a major project for Dr. Namua and the college community, and I'm just, once again, excited that he charged me to lead this effort, and it's been wonderful, absolutely wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Namua. So just as a reminder to the Board, you know, I always provide a reminder, on May 10th, we provided an update to the Board regarding the need to really expand our footprint in the Grundy County area. And it's so easy for us to talk about why this is so important to us, and so I just want to take a moment just to thank the Grundy County Expansion Committee. All their wonderful faces are here. I just want to recognize our internal partners as well, you know, Karen Kissel, Pat, where are you? Kelly Roder Tannelli, you know, just Amy Gray, just a lot of work, a lot of time, working in partnership with this committee, and just appreciate all of their commitment and their hard work. I just want to recognize them. So, as a reminder, everyone, I mean, we decided to move forward with this project to really support the college and then also the vision of our President. He continues to stress and push us all to really think about institutional growth, and I will continue to stress this, Dr. Namua, we are deeply embedded in the college, in our communities, and so I'm happy that we are looking at Grundy County, which is also a strong community that we partner with. So, and then also, this initiative supports our strategic plan, you know, grow our possibilities and craft an intentional student lifecycle for our students. We're here to serve students, and so we're excited about this path that we're taking with the Grundy expansion. So I won't go through all of this, because I shared this in May, but it has been a wonderful journey. We started this journey in August, when Dr. Namua and Mayor Morris had a conversation about expansion. And then, from there, in June, June until now, we've been extremely busy working with the committee, looking at potential academic programs, touring 15 locations moving forward with the Grundy County expansion. I just want to, once again, highlight that the committee reviewed over 15 locations, specifically in the City of Moores, also in Diamond and Cold City. So I just want to thank the mayors, including Matt, who is the Cold City Village Administrator that took time out of their schedule to conduct the tours in partnership with us. So I will announce today, and the Board already knows this, that the City of Moores is our chosen location for this expansion. And I know if Chris Brown was here, he would be clapping and singing joys and just extremely excited about this opportunity. So why? Why the City of Moores? It's easy to explain that. We have a presence there right now in the City of Moores. This is an area that continues to grow. A lot of companies out there right now, distribution companies as well. And then, of course, if you did not know, rail, air, and water access, there are over 72,000 visits per day within I-80 state route and also Route 47. And we are listening to them. They are experts, again, in the Grundy County area in terms of emerging academic and training programs. I want to thank Dr. Gray once again for working in partnership with me just to explore these programs. And I just want to stress to everyone today, we're listening to our external partners, but we will continue to engage our internal partners, our faculty, our staff, regarding some of the opportunities that we can offer academic and training programs in the Grundy area. So next steps, and it's like, we shared all this already, Dr. Namua. So we have some follow-up meetings with the Grundy County Committee. We're going to continue to engage our internal stakeholders, specifically from the academic standpoint. We really want to get their understanding and buy-in regarding potential academic programs that could be offered out there, including student support services. So in December, I will be in front of you once again to talk about land acquisition and for us to secure a real estate broker to really look at some land options in the Grundy area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know. Chairman, if I may, Dr. Farmer, I just want to again acknowledge you and your leadership in this critical project as we push our footprint out west and honor all of those interests represented by the many committee members, and thankful that the committee has validated our vision for expansion out west, because it would have been really embarrassing, I think, to all of us if they said, no, 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 no.
Right.
We're good.
Yes.
To no one's surprise, they did validate that there are tremendous opportunities out west, and I'm very thankful to that. My last audience with, or my last discussion with the committee, I challenged them to remain connected beyond the end, the official end of the committee itself, and each and every one of them committed to helping us fill the building.
Yeah.
To helping us develop and sustain partnerships with all, each and every one of their organizations from GAVC, our education partner. from GAVC, our education partner, from Procter &amp; Gamble, our industry partner, our municipalities, on and on and on, each and every one of them is committed to this project, short term and long term. So, want to offer that publicly and to all of them for their commitment forever. We sign them up to commit forever.
Forever. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer.
Thank you.
Item 1.6.4, Faculty Union Report, Dr. Bob Marsink.
Thank you, Chairman Budzinski and Board of Trustees. I just have a couple of quick things today. I'm, I don't know if Bob is going to talk about Discover JJC, but I thought it, as from faculty perspective, I thought it went very well a couple Saturdays ago. I know we saw Trustees Harris and Broderick there, I don't know if others were there, I didn't see you if you weren't. And I know President Namu was there too. And it's always great to see, I'm glad, it's so nice to see people actually back on campus and students, prospective students showing up and meeting potential faculty members and people from all over, the various staff, et cetera. So, it's just, I don't know, it's just nice to have some normalcy back in our lives, right? Let's see, what else? Not a whole, not a whole ton here. I do want to pledge faculty support for whatever we can do to help facilitate the Grundy County expansion. I know we'll be working with Dr. Gray and Dr. Namu on that. It's an exciting opportunity, I think, for the, for the college. And so, what we can do to help facilitate that or be on board with that, however you want to say it, we're certainly going to do that, so. Couple of other things, oh, there's also, contractually, just to point out a couple of things that are moving forward. We had MOU regarding advising, and it's my understanding that that is, I want to thank both Roberto Valdez and Amy Gray for, for leading the task force on that and our faculty members. They put in, I'll use nice words, a lot of time over the last several months working on this, and we think it's really invital for the future of the institution to get it right. And so, we're really hoping that they do, we like what we've heard and we think they're just about ready to wrap things up, so, which is great. Another task force is being formed, has been formed for another part of the contract for our coordinators, who are very important support for our chairs and other, and deans, et cetera. So, that is also getting underway and that's, we're moving towards that. And, let's see, oh, there's, there's one thing in the agenda tonight that, there's no name attached to it, but one of the people, the one of the people who's retiring, or is, let's put it this way, you're going to say if he's retiring, is our, is Vice President of our Faculty Union, Jeff Bradford, who's been a fantastic faculty member here since 1997. And I believe he also worked here as adjunct prior to that. And I believe he's going to try to keep, maintain a relationship with the institution once he leaves. He's leaving for personal reasons, but he's been a fantastic faculty member and I just wanted to make sure that I stated that. And, I think, oh, last thing, the ERP, thank you for the, thank you for the update on that. That is something that I can tell you that everybody on campus is aware of, paying attention to, and interested in. And it was nice to hear an update tonight on where it's, where we are and where it's headed, so, thank you for that. And that is it for this, oh, one last thing, I'm sorry. I will not be here next month because you meet at lunch and I'm giving a final at that time, so I want to wish everybody a happy holidays, Thanksgiving, and whatever other holidays you celebrate throughout the remaining part of the year. And I wish you all a safe and peaceful time, and we'll see you back in January.
Dr. Marsink, we do have a question. Trustee Morales.
Sure, oh, yes, I'm sure, yeah, absolutely. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you for your report, Dr. Marsink. You mentioned an MOU for advising. What is that MOU for exactly? Can you unpack that a little bit more?
It's contractual, I, others could probably speak to it better than me, but it basically, it's, we did whatever we could during the negotiations to, to get everything done. But one of the things that really we needed to spend more time on was, is helping to, to devise and, and work on the advising system, how we advise our students here, how we get them in the door, and then how they, our big part is how we get them to faculty advisors in programs so that they're ready for those, that type of advising, once they get there. And they've worked for months now coming up with a system, a plan, and, and they're still working on it, they're still finishing it up. But it is one of the MOUs that's in the current contract. And the reason why we didn't finish it during the spring is, we would have never been able to finish our work in the spring if we, if we had, so.
Well, thank you for sharing that, and thank you for any influence that you can offer to the faculty to continue to, to work with our advising and our students, to continue to better this for our students. Because I know sometimes between faculty and administrators, with all universities, there, sometimes they don't work very well together, but I'm glad to see that we are working well and any influence you can continue to offer to continue that momentum, I appreciate that, thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you. And I, I promise that the folks who are involved, particularly in this task force, very, very involved in the process, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one comment.
Sure.
It was a great open house, you did a great job, I heard it was over 700 students, and as they were walking around, they were impressed at the ability to see things, to see the tables you had lined up. I was excited, I always love coming to this, and it's really exciting to see all of you present. So, congratulations, kudos to you for doing such a wonderful job. And being that I sub in Joliad Central and Lockport East and Lincoln Way, they even mentioned it to me that they were excited that they had so many students that came.
Great, right, that's, we'd love to see them walking through the doors, so.
You got it. Thank you.
I just have one comment, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to you, from us and the whole faculty and staff that will be here, and happy holidays as well. We appreciate all the work you guys do for us. Enjoy it with your families and friends, okay?
Thank you, Jake, I will pass that along.
Thank you, sir.
All righty.
We'll see you next year.
Yes, you will.
Item 1.6.5, the Adjunct Faculty Union Report, Ms. Laurel Disco.
Hello, and thank you.
Hello.
This is on, I guess, yes, my voice is just not what it probably should be, but here we are. So, I'll be brief. I was very happy to hear about the advising MOU, and I've listened to this progress going on in my own department meetings over a period of time, and listened to my students about being in the right class at the right time, in the right sequence, and this is, is going to make a difference, it really is. It's a step forward and hopefully better serve our whole student population. I know we're not part of that process, but we see the students that work with all of the advisors, and so, it's important to us as well. So I appreciate all the work that was done by that group in, in making this step forward. Other than that, I really don't have much to say, that seems to be a pattern of mine. But, you know, things are going well and we're looking forward to the end of the semester. So, I also won't be here at the next meeting because I also have a final exam that same afternoon. So I would like to wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving, safe travels for anyone who's going out of town, and a great winter break and holiday season, and I will see you in January. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays to you as well. Your family and your adjunct staff, we appreciate it, so.
Item 1.6.6, the Building and Grounds Committee Report. I don't know who to call.
Well, go ahead, we're teaming up steps, so go ahead.
So, the replaced IT service room crack unit will be going before the Board tonight.
The crack unit is, it's, it's the, it's the AC unit for the IT department, so that's very important and make sure we keep our, our systems going out of the system technological world, so it helps keep it cool and keeps it running, so. That's before the Board tonight, yes.
Building C, E, and G Mechanical ACM Removal goes out to bid tomorrow and should be brought before the Board in December. And currently in design, we have the replacement of our T-building boiler with condensing, condensing boiler, which will be going out to pre-bid and should be brought before the Board in January.
Yep, that's perfect.
We also discuss current projects that are in process and everything is going according to plan.
It's a simple report this week, so, no news is good news with us, appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question? Because this came up during the open house. I know we have the, the, what is it called, the gender, all type gender washrooms? And it came up in the, like, auto area, that there's two males, and then there's the all gender, and then you have to go searching for the female. So some were like, why did we not leave the, one of the, as female, and why do we move it so far away? So I'm making this comment because it came through several who were looking to the women's bathroom, even I was, and when I found out that it was now multi, I'm like, I don't know where it's at. So, I'm bringing that to your attention, that that came up with people asking because they were looking for bathrooms, and it was in the automotive area. And I mean, I know it's men that are in the automotive, but male, male, then all, and then searching for a woman's.
Yeah, well, we have women in the automotive department too, I don't know the quite specific logistics of that, can I chime in, Pat, over here to comment?
Actually, Trustee Mahalik, I'd like to call on Dr. Irvin to, to share some information.
Pat just sits back there and just...
Pat might be on deck, so.
Thank you, Trustee, for sharing your concerns. It was concerns of other employees and students, they just didn't know where the female bathrooms are. So where the female bathroom was converted to all gender, right up the elevator, there's another one. And the students and some of the employees thought they had to walk all the way to the cafeteria, which is a long way. And right down the next corridor, there's another. So we're working on signage to help with that, because people have been going to that same bathroom forever.
Oh, I know.
And they're not aware that there are other female restrooms. And we made sure we didn't want inconvenience, but they're not aware, so.
Yeah, because the comment was, a couple of the moms were like, "Why do you have two men, two male ones, and then an all gender? Where did you do with the women's?"
Mm-hmm.
"I don't know, I had no clue where it was at." And then, one of the guys from auto came out and showed, walked us and said, "We'll show you where it's at."
Right, right.
"But it's around the corner."
Right.
So we wouldn't have known.
Exactly, so we're adding signage to help. And we'll communicate to the campus with a map and the additional signage, so we haven't gotten any complaints since we've addressed it, and we'll have all-campus communication. But we do have others.
And what was the determination, just out of my curiosity now, why did we not convert one of the males into an all gender and leave the woman where it was at?
So, it was quicker to address the students' requests, they've been asking for an all gender restroom closer to OSA, the cafeteria, ever since I've been here for three years. We have some, but they're all the way in J, quite a ways away. So this was a quick way to convert, and it was cost-effective.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Irvin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee.
Item 1.6.7, the Board Policy Committee Report, Trustee Garcia again.
Yes, thank you. So, the Board Policy Committee met a few weeks, well, two weeks ago or so, to review a few of the different items. So we, as a reminder, we have first reading. First reading basically means policies that are currently being reviewed, and then second reading are items that we all are going to be voting for this meeting. So I'll go ahead and go over the first reading and provide a quick overview. So for this time around, we have 12 different policies that are up for first reading. The first one is 1.02.00, the philosophy, mission, and strategy. One of the things that you will notice is that we just made sure to have our mission clearly written to emphasize that information. 1.1.0.02, it provides a little bit of information about the process, is the officers of the Board, the pro tempore, and it provides gender-inclusive language for the term of the Secretary. Then we have 1.11.00, trustee development. It highlights the process of, and the importance of providing additional training to the trustees to be able to do our job. Then we have 1.41.00, that adds additional language to talk about the process for any remaining funds that are part of our trustee development. 1.45.00 is meetings of the Board. For this particular one, we added language about the importance of legal counsel and their role within our Board meetings. We have 1.45.01, that is the agenda preparation, that highlights who sets the agenda and how trustees can add additional items to the agenda. 1.45.06, special meetings of the Board, no major changes for this one, just cleaning up the language a little bit. The next one is 1.90.00, naming of buildings and other properties. One of the major changes for this one is increasing the value of the building in terms of monetary amount in order to be able to get the approval of the Board prior to changing the name. Before it was 25,000, now it went up to 100,000. So anything less than that does not require Board approval with the name change. Then we have 9.06.00, that is the flag raising and displaying protocol for organizations and groups. This one is a new policy that breaks down the different areas and the, and the process on how to be able to raise specific flags and their sub-procedure attached to this. Then we have 13.01.02, that talks about consultant services. For this one, we mainly cleared the, cleaned the language to make it a little bit more friendly, no major changes. Then the next one is 13.03.00, inventories, again, no major changes, just cleaning the language a little bit to make it more friendly. And then the last one is 13.04.00, that talks about the sale and disposal of college property, no major, no major changes, just cleaning up the language. Okay? And that is all.
Thank you. Item 1.6.8, the Finance Committee Report, Mr. Mahalik.
Audit report was given tonight, and that's what we discussed at the Finance Committee, so I'm pretty good on that, so.
Perfect. Item 1.6.9, the President's Report.
Chairman Budzinski, members of the Board and the college community, thank you for the opportunity to be before you today. As, before the, the report comes up, gosh, Josh, you're too fast. You know, there are many things that do not make this report, I just want to highlight just a couple of them. Really thank Deanna and Alex for their partnership, you heard a lot about that today, really proud of that. I do want to let the college community know that a team from the Higher Learning Commission visited JJC on Monday and Tuesday and had a lot of really positive things to say. Now, it'll be a few weeks till we get the final report, but there were just a lot of positive things. So know that our accrediting body sees a lot of great things happening here at JJC, and I look forward to their report. And I want to thank Kristen Seesmeyer in Dr. Gray's area, and I want to thank the Board for participating in that process. There were over 140 individuals who participated, and that's outside of the planning process, just attending meetings and communicating with our accrediting body, all the incredible work that's being done here at JJC. So thank you for that. Something that did not make the list is, and you, I don't know if anyone's ever going to believe this number, Dr. Gray and Dr. Farmer, but, and you know where I'm going with this. So the 12 by 12 by 12 numbers that I shared with you all last time were, of course, reason to celebrate. You will never believe what the percentage is. While the staff hoped we'd be up 12%, you know that we've gone way past that. I'm not making this up. As of this morning, we are up 24.24%.
12.24.
So thank you again to all those involved. And again, Dr. Farmer, you know, some of these slides bring back some trauma, some traumatic memories, especially the two project manager slides. some traumatic memories, especially the two project manager slide that we spent so much time up on the board. I'm really thankful that there's been so much progress made since we announced to the college community. And board, thank you again for your support of our vision around ERP restart. It's, it's really great to be at this point. And like Dr. Farmer mentioned, it won't be smooth sailing. There, there will be challenges. We will commit to you and have committed to you to be transparent with those. I do want to offer in regards to minority businesses, this is, this is something that was really, I think, glossed over when Karen Kissel gave her presentation to the board a few months ago. So for our BEP program, BEP awardees, in FY '21, this college awarded over $800,000 to minority businesses. That's to be celebrated. However, in FY '22, that 800,000 turned into 2.3 million. So I want to celebrate, you know, how much business, how much we're awarding to minority businesses in, in Karen Kissel's area. And again, just the clean audit, again, kudos to, to Karen, Jeff, and the team for that. That's certainly to be celebrated. Items before the board today included in my memo to the board, as you'll see, really celebrating our campus police and the negotiating teams who came to this agreement. We had four out of the six union agreements coming up. Kudos to all the negotiating teams, really proud that that's made its way to the board here today. As you saw, the Board of Trustees' approval of the tax levy that you saw last month, this is the final step in the process and, of course, acknowledgement of the audit for fiscal year '23. I had the chance to be principal for a day for District 86. And so I just want to send a shout out to Dr. Rouse, the superintendent for District 46, excuse me, District 86, apologies, Superintendent Rouse, and Principal Joy Hopkins at Farragut Elementary, who had to endure all of my questions and me tagging along throughout the entire day. I have such a greater appreciation for what our K through 12 leaders do on a daily basis. So again, I want to thank Dr. Rouse and Principal Hopkins for allowing me into that space. And, you know, just want to say for Principal Hopkins there, she came into every single room and said, hey, everyone, I'm leaving the, the school and here's your new principal. So I had to, that's what I walked into. And so fifth graders booed. Kindergarteners cried. And then I get to come in and talk. So that just shows me how much they love Principal Hopkins at Farragut. I accidentally made the front page of the Herald because I called the Hubolt interchange "super cool" as a joke to IDOT Secretary of Transportation Osman. And then the headline in the Herald was "The Super Cool Hubolt Interchange." So I don't know if that's a point of pride or embarrassment. I'm still working through that. However, once again, JJC's profile is high. The governor, elected officials, you'll see Leader Manley, Governor Pritzker, Secretary Osman, Senator Ventura, and many, many others. Representative Walsh as well, back there to celebrate the progress that has been made by IDOT under the Rebuild Illinois Campaign, which I know most of us endure on I-80. Nonetheless, it's sending billions and billions of dollars to improve the infrastructure. And IDOT and the governor's office chose to have that press conference here at JJC. Shout out to KRT and her team for making that happen in a very short period of time. Thank you for the trust, yes, go ahead.
You just missed one other elected official, Jennifer.
JBT was there. I think I missed a few others as well. Trustee Mohalik?
Manley.
Leader Manley as well. Thank you for trustees who were able to join us at the Romeo Vale campus. I believe trustee Harris, trustee Ellis, and trustee Broderick were with us. Okay, apologies, apologies. Nonetheless, it was a fantastic celebration of a campus that celebrated its 30th anniversary. And so the board understands, we serve 1,826 students at our Romeo Vale campus with expertise and specialized programs in cybersecurity and CNA. That campus is really coming into its own under Dr. Brown. And I'm pleased with everything that happened on that day. You'll see another round of pictures here where Maranoke and Dr. Brown, and no children were hurt in that picture over on the right-hand side. As Dr. Marsink mentioned and trustee Broderick alluded to earlier, Discover JJC was really an incredible event. I was traveling and I believe the ACCT New York event was happening, so I wasn't able to be there last year. It was really a treat this year. Over 500 attendees woke up and participated on a Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. So I want to give a shout out to Roberto and his team in student development for facilitating, for coordinating this event. I want to give a shout out to all of our faculty specifically, representing each department. All of the students walking the concourse and the bridge got to experience all of the things that our incredible academic departments have to offer. Joe Lyman was there with this whole elaborate trainer system that seemed like something out of the future. So again, kudos to our faculty and our faculty leaders for giving our students that experience. And we will no doubt see many of those students here at JJC. I want to give a shout out to our PTK group on campus for inviting me to their ceremony and what they represent. PTK represents some of our highest achieving academic students. PTK as a national organization is leading the anti-stigma campaign. It's a campaign they're referring to called CC Smart. And JJC intends to take the lead on that campaign here in the state of Illinois to destroy the stigma attached to community colleges. And PTK is at the forefront of all of that. Trustee Ellis is up in the upper left-hand corner as a participant in the president's leadership experience. I want to give a huge shout out to Jennifer Baines, who had her baby recently, by the way, and Mark Morrissey for putting this together and really planning an eight-week Emerging Leaders Academy to be proud of. And I hope the cabinet's with me on this one. You'll see us sitting right there for the final projects for each one of these groups. Many of those projects will make their way into our strategic direction and our operations. No doubt about it. And this is our attempt to grow from within, aligned to the strategic plan, to invest in our emerging leaders for the future of Joliet Junior College. And here they are, along with our cabinet. I want to give a shout out to Dean Butler, Dean DeAndre Butler, and his office for putting together just an incredible celebration again of our first-generation students. We have over 100 participants here. We do bring students from JTHS to celebrate with us. Just a huge, important event for JJC. And I'm not sure if you'll be able to hear it. You might. There's some rumbling there. Last week, we were able to celebrate all of those new country flags in the concourse through an event that Dr. Irvin organized to celebrate International Education Week. This parade that you're seeing made its way down the concourse under all of those new flags, across the bridge where we were greeted with music and food. There always has to be food. And with that, chairman, I'll yield back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one, can I add one thing?
Sure.
We, as trustees, when I started in 2015, were never highly visible at activities. And it was, it's great for us and the community to see us as trustees. So I know that when I looked at the announcement on the JJC 30th anniversary, it said, Dr. Namu will be joined with his JJC Board of Trustees. I think we need to know about these things on our calendar. I didn't see it on the calendar. I would have loved to have been at the first generation one too and the Phi Theta. I think the involvement of the trustees, we want to be there, or those of us that can be there, would like to be there, to show the community and be the outreach. So if you could please make sure that we are inclusive in all these things, that would be extremely, you know, instrumental to us as a trustee and as our positions, but also showing the community how involved we are and how much we respect the involvement of being with JJC.
Sure. Thank you, trustee Broderick.
Thank you.
Item 1.7.1, the Approval of Minutes for the Regular Meeting Held on October 18, 2023.
So moved.
Second. I do have something to add.
Okay.
In regards to where we gave our updates for the ACCT conference, I noticed, I was reading my section and I noticed that there wasn't enough mentioned. And I know that I had written, I read off three pages of it. And I know that we were required, I thought, to do this because it gave a full and adequate description of all the functions we were at. And when there is over $3,000 spent on each of us to go to the conference, we should be able to provide the documentation of what we did see so that we are showing the community what we did gather from going to the conference. Because I even too like to listen to what ones you went to so that I can read through my, my book of the legacy of what they had. And I think, trustee Harris, did you turn yours in, your report?
Yeah.
I know I did. And I would love for both you and trustee Michelle Lee to turn hers in. Because when I looked at hers, I looked at the ones she said were her favorites and I saw them both on the same day on Wednesday at the same time. So I'm wondering, you know, did you go to more or whatever? So it would be nice just to see what you guys did and what you were involved so that can more stimulate us to get to know what things you picked out so that we have a good learning experience and show the public what we did.
Okay, so that is not the way the policy is written, to give Karen sheets and sheets of handwritten notes. What the policy states is if we receive handouts, the handouts can be given so that they can, should be shared with the rest of the board. The notes are not what the policy states we submit.
Well, the thing is though, if someone would FOI us on what we spent on this event and it's over 3,000, it would be in our best interest, whether you call it policy or not. But we decided to design this last year so that we could have this as a documentation purpose. And I think it would only be good to add this so that we do have it. Because otherwise, I don't want to have somebody saying, what did you do? And there's no documentation other than handouts.
So we gave an update at the last meeting. The update is what's entered into the notes. The update that we gave are what's entered into the meeting. My personal notes for that week are not FOI-able. So there's, the minute I enter them into Karen to type out, I mean, I'm not giving her three pages worth of scribble to write up.
Oh, I would type it up. I would type it up. I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't know what this has to do with the approval of the minutes.
No, I'm just saying to add it to it.
You're talking about policy.
Right. Yeah. I just said to add it.
So I'm just trying to bring you back to the agenda.
Thank you.
I would just say, my, my point was to add it because I don't think there was enough in there in regards to what I did do. It seemed very, less than what I did. That's why I brought it up.
Again, we're not going to ask her to type up all those notes.
I'm not asking, I'm asking that she keep it as a record and just embellish what was not in there of what I did do. Okay?
Refresh my memory, was this added to the policy? Because we've never done this in the past.
No, it's not part of the policy.
We added it last year because we came up with a form so everybody could have it.
It was when Maureen brought a, the reason that the verbiage is in there is when Maureen brought the PowerPoint from the ICCTA and she gave us the same PowerPoint presentation that was done at the conference. So in the policy, it is written in that if you, as a trustee, bring copies or bring any handouts or anything like that from the ICCTA, that they can be copied and distributed among the rest of us versus going through such a long presentation, especially if you were already there and you did attend and you, and you did. So that's what the policy, to clarify, the notes portion and the giving out copies, there is no notes in there in the policy. It's referring to copies and documents that the ICCTA gives to us. And it was more to do with the 15-minute PowerPoint.
Good. I didn't go this year, so I don't have that. But I usually take it on, on a digital form. I had given an app and I just, ACT. And then usually at the end, I have to refer back to it for a certain period of time and then usually just delete it at a certain point.
Now, but do you remember the, the thing that we put, the form that we put out that was the session and one, two, three points that you put into it? And then if you did a college tour that you would put into it? That's what we did last year. And it would be nice because there are times.
I don't remember.
It just helps document that we didn't screw around, that we went and did our sessions. And I'm just saying that, so it's, point out. I would like to think, have more things added to my thing.
Okay, well, yeah, that's it. Her additional notes too, and that's all done. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
I stand by my minutes. I accurately, I believe, captured everything that you said at the meeting. You may have had more on your notes that you didn't discuss, but I captured what everyone said at the meeting, what they attended.
And your notes don't have to be verbatim, correct?
That is correct.
Yes. And it's like, I think as long as you're capturing highlights.
Right.
We're fine. I don't, I don't see a need to amend the minutes if you captured everything in the minutes already.
I believe I did.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes. We ready to vote?
Yes.
Trustee Mohalik.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Ellis.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.8, Approval of Tonight's Agenda.
So moved.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Mohalik.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Ellis.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.9, Approval of Consent Agenda as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like items pulled.
Who seconded, who seconded that? Okay, thank you.
Your items.
2.5.2, 3.1, 3.2.1, 3.2.5, 3.8, 4.22, and 4.26.
I'm also going to pull 3.2.6. Any other items? Show it on the motion.
Okay, yes, we still need to vote on the regular consent. Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mohalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Need a motion for item 2.5.2?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
My question was, I had asked to see what our contractual obligation was money-wise. So how much is the, I mean, I'm in favor of it, but I don't remember the dollar amount of how much this is going to be for us to contractually agree to.
Trustee Broderick, thank you for your question. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Gray for a response.
Actually, I don't understand your question.
By doing this, moving this, these, these positions, what does our dollar cost to us to do that? I know we're doing it because we agreed to do it, but what is the cost of this increased position?
For all of the positions that are moving over? I have to get that point because it said, it's going to be a list of faculties that are moving over on the schedule.
So, Dr. Gray, can you kind of take a higher level explanation of what the advancement actually is and actually means?
So when faculty, when faculty earn 15 graduate credits, and there's a variety of way to do that, they can either do it through taking classes or professional growth units, continuing education, they get moved to the next column.
Right.
And it's different, it's a different amount for each person because there's columns going across that are the 15 and then a schedule going down that starts at like 11 and goes down to, and that's... and goes down to, and that's their years of service. So when the faculty member turns in documentation of their 15 credits, then Maureen O'Keefe, who's my administrative assistant, submits the information to HR, and that moves them across to their next level.
And I understand that. I totally understand the change and all that. I was just looking for the dollar amount. That's why I had requested it prior to, so I'm sorry that you don't know, but that's what I was looking for prior to, when I had asked back on Monday.
Okay, I can get that for you.
Thank you.
And this is because of a contract obligation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is built in the salary schedule. I don't, I don't understand why the question is, because they've already reached it.
It's contractual, but I would like to know what I'm approving dollar-wise, because if it's contractual, I'd like to know what we are approving, because we are supposed to be the taxpayer's advocate up here, so I'd like to know what I'm voting on, not just right across the board. I agree with it, but I'd just like to know the number.
So what I'll, what I can do is figure out where they started and then moved, so it's not just like figuring out what they're currently at. You want the change.
Right. I mean, I support it, don't get me wrong. I totally support it. I just wonder what the dollar amount is that I'm approving.
Okay.
So that's where I stand with it. Thank you.
This is a flexible number, though, as people complete credits and come to you, so it's an evergreen number.
Yeah. Every single person on here probably has a different dollar amount.
Right.
But we can, we can figure it out.
Thank you.
You need to vote in that.
I'm.
Oh, sorry?
I'm sorry, I just, seems like a lot of work for Dr. Gray for something that it seems like she's going to have to go through every single employee and try to find their sliding pay scale. And I just don't know if I agree as a board member that she needs to be doing all of that work for, for your knowledge. We agreed to this. We know by contract that we have to do this decision, or we could be in a, in a position. So.
And it's budgeted for.
And it's budgeted for. So, I mean, I personally don't know that we need to be having Dr. Gray.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Well, and it changes. By the time she reports to us at the next meeting, she might have more submissions for more changes.
Exactly. So I just personally don't know that, I understand why you did not respond to Maureen's question, request.
Are we ready to vote?
Any other comments before we vote?
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.1, approval to pay the listing of bills for the period ending October 31st, 2023, as presented. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. I had asked for several things to be pulled and, or to be talked about when I sent it in on Monday. And my concern is, this would have been a lot easier if we had just been able to see what they were ahead of time, as I have talked to most of my chairs in the ICCTA group, and we are allowed as board trustees to know what our, if we have questions about it in the board book, we should be able to be, have them answered, not told that we have governance policy. We are the protectors of the taxpayer, and our financial resources, we should be checking, and we should be looking at it. And that's why I have pulled this out, because there were things that bothered me of concern that I wanted to address. Some of those were the Southwest Airline that was on page 68. There was also the limo fee for, I guess, the PAM that came for our retreat on page 56. There was the ARIA on page 51 for 79491, and then a credit for 43368 that I questioned. And I guess my question is more so, we are looking at the trustees' dollars, and I can't tell where the trustees' dollars are being spent or not spent, because I don't see enough in the bill section to help me understand it, and also in looking at the bills in regards to even the ACCT retreat. Last month, we had a 620250 bill. This month, we have a 145. We had over 60, almost $6,400 in bills for something that, I don't know if it's in the budget or not. I don't know if, who figured it out that we'd have this retreat with ACT. The trustees never voted on or knew about the cost factor, because the ICCTA is free, because that comes with our, our annual fee that we have with them. But I'm looking at conference fees, air, air fees. I mean, why the credit of 43368 for the hotel at ARIA for Alicia? I thought it was 235. What's, I'm not understanding that. We have airfare, we have conference fees. Help me understand it, because when I'm going through, and I don't know where we mentioned the travel budget for us, but that becomes an issue of all these documented in the bill section where we can't see. I've got all of a sudden more bills than everybody else does, and I don't know why. I see my hotel bills, and I added things up, and that's why I pulled the bills out, because this would have been a lot easier just to have it done ahead of time, and I feel bad for my administration people, but I'm confused. I pull pages out, trying to figure.
So if you look at the very back of the book, actually, all of our budgets are broken down. So if you go to the back of your board book and you literally flip through the glossary and terms, right here in this next section, it's actually all broken down. It is broken down by budget on who spends, who has spent what. So if you look, it's not on a page number here. Yeah.
I did, Michelle. And the sad thing is, the numbers are not jiving with what is there. So when you look at the bill section, the bills don't jive with what's here. Pardon me?
So show me what doesn't jive. What are your questions?
Yours is, yours is higher. Alicia shows a 43368 credit, which is showing on the bill section. I don't know why she's got a credit. I'm asking, too, if there was any reimbursements since she didn't go. Then I have 2829 out there. Diane has 18, 1881. Jim has 222164, but I don't see airfare on there, or if it's in there, it's all lumped. And without seeing it in the bill section, there's a bunch of Southwest bills. I don't know who they're for. How do we break it down? How do we look at it? I mean, I'm told that I'm over budget. Why am I over budget if everybody else is still under budget? I'm.
Because you travel more than everybody. You get involved in all these other things, okay? That's why you're over budget.
I'm what?
You're involved, involved in all these other committees, and you go to all these ICCTA, CCA meetings. That's why you're over.
No, that's not, it's not. There are things that are on there, and, you know, I'm questioning the bill section because of all the things that came up. I'm okay with the things that I had asked initially, because now I have a better understanding than what they were, but it would have been so much better. When I look at what we are allowed as trustees, and this is in our board book that we got that says specifically that we are entitled to look at expenditures and contracts, and I don't know why it was declined on me, and when other, when all the other boards are able, trustees are able to do it, I think we need to rethink that, because all of these past months, we've been able to, but when I got the email from the president and he stated that Shetier was involved in it, it's stopped and I didn't see anything. So I think we need a full, full opening of the bills for the travel and any reimbursements, and also for any of the retreats that we've done that are on here.
Okay, so I'm just looking at what you're saying doesn't jive. So if you look at everyone, we all know that we went to the ACCT conference, and so therefore there is, you know, it is lumped in under lodging, registration, and airfare. So I guess if you want to go through the budget, pull out everything, you know, and see how those actually match up for each trustee individually, is what trustee Broderick is. That's what I thought that this is. So for the.
That's what this report is, so.
But this report is incomplete, because you have me with, my, my hotel was over $1,100. I don't see that on any of yours yet, and we all checked out at the same time. So that's what I'm saying. Airfare, you've got it lumped in as airfare, lodging, and registration. So if I take the 19.
That was on the one expense report.
Pardon me?
That's because it was all on one expense report.
All on one expense report?
Mm-hmm.
So why did Alicia get a 433, 43368 credit back?
Why does that bother you? Go ahead and answer.
Can I go ahead and bring it back?
Why do you question when I'm asking something? This is.
That was a refund on your, on your hotel.
Did you pay for the airfare and the, the registration?
She was answering, that was a.
Go ahead.
The credit for trustee Morales is her credit for the ARIA hotel. Not everybody had the exact same deposit amount. That's just how they build them. So hers came back, her initial deposit was that amount, and then that was the credit back.
So you said, because when you gave me the email back, you said 235 something. So we were.
That was your deposit.
That's my, well, see, I did, I took it as that was everybody's deposit, because we all stayed.
I never said that was everybody's deposit.
Yeah, but we all stayed the same amount of time, so why would the deposits be different?
So I'd like to, I'd like to end the discussion right here.
Thank you.
Because we are discussing 3.1, which is the listing of bills for the campus.
Right, and the credit, that's what I'm asking about.
No, you're asking about the policy and board travel, which is going to be addressed later on with another policy.
No, the 43368 credit's there, and so is the ARIA bill that I'm asking about.
As it relates to the board travel to the conference, it's going to be addressed later.
That's on the bills.
This makes it look like we don't have confidence in our staff, and I'm sorry if this coming across that way, but I, I have confidence in the work that you are all doing in finance and putting all this information here. So I apologize if it comes across like we are lacking confidence, but I can assure you that we don't, we don't have any. Yes, it does. When you start questioning and nickel and diming them, it does.
I'd like to end the discussion on this, because this is going to come up later. It, it's not going to end with 3.1.
Thank you. Oh, no, yeah, it's not. It's never going to end, but go ahead.
Are you ready to vote?
Yes, we're ready to vote.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.2.1, business services, a bid for the computer room air conditioning replacement.
Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to answer any questions you might have. Karen and/or Matt.
Do I need a motion before discussion?
I'm getting ahead, so.
I'm getting ahead. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Now we can have discussion.
Sorry. I think we need another questions first.
3.2.1, what is your, that's what we're on, right?
Yes.
Did you have a question, Maureen? You pulled that one, didn't you?
Just, yeah, just one second.
And Karen, I'm going to ask Karen, if she doesn't mind coming up, or I'll ask you first. I know I had asked, and you had given me a printout of the RFPs and when we do for bids, and I'm still leery and concerned about stability of the company's financial stability. I saw the checks that you do as far as when you do an ERP, you know, for something else, but for the bidding process, I don't know if we have a solid understanding of the insurance that's with this company, any references. Whenever we, in corporate USA, go out for bids, we have to have things answered so that we know that we're not going to have to go and get somebody else to finish the work or do the, do the installation of something. And that's what I'm concerned about, is the position of protecting JJC with knowing the financial stability of the companies that bid with us. I mean, this one's $423,000 for them to do the work. And, or.
Actually, it's 236.
236. And I'm just, I want to know, how are we, is there anything we should do to improve this process? You know, when you're looking at the dollar amounts of what are out there, I mean, references mean a lot to people to know that we're assured that the companies are going to do the work they're supposed to. Have we ever done work with Commercial Mechanical and Dunlap?
Trustee Broderick, thank you for your question. So I'd like to ask Karen Kissel to respond and encourage her to talk about, you know, our procurement process again, and remind the board of the Illinois Procurement Code and some of the rules and regulations that govern that process.
I'll have Matt join me, because he's the procurement expert here. Anybody who does construction here on campus has to provide us a bid bond. So if anything were to happen, we'd be able to pull that bond and be able to get money to have someone come and do the work for us.
For example, the restrooms that we just did as well, because.
Exactly.
So you have the bid bond that's 10% for the construction, correct?
We have a bid, no, it's 100. It's 110%.
And then you have the performance bond for 110%?
Yes.
Okay, and that assures us that even if they walked away or they didn't do the work correctly, that we would be.
We would call the bond.
Taken care of?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm, because I got this, and I didn't understand what it was in here.
That's a basic policy for procurement. We have to do that.
Well, I'm asking them.
It's basic.
I'm asking them, thank you.
Oh, okay.
So we are then, with all that in place, there's nothing that would, you know, put us at risk at all?
No. I can't say nothing would put us at risk.
You can't say that, obviously, with the cost of equipment and materials, unfortunately, you don't, you don't, can't say that, but, but this is, this will make us, if not only whole, it'll make us mostly whole, generally, so.
Do we have any type of loss insurance at all?
Loss insurance? The bid bond?
Well, so, the bid bonds would be obviously the loss insurance. So if, so if the company goes under, they walk away, something happens, then we would call the bond, much like we did with the restrooms, as you said. The other thing is, is we also do, I think you'll also notice in there that there are insurance requirements, that we do require certificate of insurance with JJC named as additionally insured.
I see that.
The other thing I would like to point out is these are public bids, and we are bound by statute to take lowest and best unless there's a compelling reason to not give the award to another company, then we're pretty much bound to, to give the award to somebody who, who is qualified. There's no reason to think that, that Commercial Mechanical isn't qualified. So, you know, is there risk? Yeah, but that's also why we do the bonds and make them go through those hoops and that sort of thing. and make them go through those hoops and that sort of thing.
And that's the thing that came up like when we had training with Robin Schwartz. They said, "We're not required to take the lowest bid. We should always look at what is presented to us." And that's what they shared with us at the meeting. That Jim, you know, even we spoke about it, and they were very clear about saying we don't have to take the lowest bid.
Well, we have in the past. We have excluded lowest bids, because they weren't qualified. I think you probably remember through our time on the board, because I've been on the board longer than me. And I know in my tenure, there's been things that this vendor, the contractor did not meet the requirements. So the lowest minimum requirement. So we exclude them, and we go the next one up. So we don't have to take the lowest possible bid.
I just want to make sure.
And not for an RFP, we don't have to take the lowest bid. So we have a rubric or a matrix where we weight people, not just on cost, but on the services that they're going to provide, on their references, on other types of customers that they have that are similar to JJC. So that's when we don't have to take the lowest. But for a regular bid, we have to take the lowest, most responsible bidder.
Yeah, because I noticed you don't do any references at all on the bids, correct?
No.
All right, thank you.
Do we have a motion on 3.2.1? Do we have a vote?
So moved.
No, we already have a motion. Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is 3.2.5, the Consortium for Supplemental IT Resource for Lucian Project. We have a motion.
I'll second.
What's the question?
Can we get a little bit of an idea of, is this is included in the budget? What it is, it's going with this? Is this part of the ERP?
It's not a part of the ERP restart budget. This has been completely vetted out 100% with IT and also with MAT. We have positions in IT that are very difficult to fill right now. In fact, we had two failed searches. So what we're trying to do is move forward with the ERP and work in partnership with Campus Work with this project. It is for six months. And we decided to go with Campus Works, because they are... We went through the consortium process, and they are the only company that has an elusive technical professional that can work with us.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? We're ready to put votes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have a motion to table item 3.2.6.
So moved.
Second. Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
I don't know why we're tabling it. Can we explain?
We don't have a discussion at this point.
I know, but we didn't open it up to discussion.
There isn't...
Once a motion is made, you have to vote on it. There's no discussion.
No.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.8, Board of Trustees' Approval of Tax Objection Resolution. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I know that before, when we had this, that it was with specific language for attorney firms, for our previous attorney firm. Has that changed?
Trustee Bradrick, thank you for the question. I'm going to hand it over Karen Kissel to respond.
Yes, it has changed. In 2016, the board approved the use of RCK, our prior law firm, to represent us solely if this situation were to arise. The language was changed to allow the college to have discretion to hire an attorney who would represent us, any attorney. So it's not just RCK. It's open.
So if that's... If you're doing a PTAB, then you'd be able to work with that attorney if it's a joint?
Correct.
So that would not prohibit you from doing anything, then, with regards to us needing to approve? You've already got this to open with whoever would do the PTABS if there was a PTAB?
If you approve it tonight, this way.
Okay, and as far as this, is it residential or commercial?
If it's $100,000, I think it's mostly commercial. I'd have to defer to Jeff, because he's been around through some of these scenarios historically. It's only been commercial.
Only what?
It's only been commercial.
Okay, that's what I thought. Great, thank you.
Ready for a vote?
Jeff, I don't think you've been around that long.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item. 4.2.2.
So moved.
Can we have a second?
I'll second.
My concern is...
Go ahead.
My concern is that you identify that the board chair will appoint. I think we need to have in there the trustees will give the options of choices, as I had given last month, of the committees that like to be assigned to, with added point that the chair will communicate with each board of trustee to discuss commitment assignment. So that it's not just a direct assignment. It's what the board of trustee also wants to engage in. I think that language needs to be added to this. So I ask that we add that to it, because I think you're missing some of the points of what should be included so that the trustees have open communication to.
Can I go ahead and... At this point, do we answer?
You can talk to it.
Okay, sounds good. Just making sure. So this is a policy. So this is breaking down what is going to happen in order to make sure that we have different committees. Again, there's always room for additional conversation between the trustees and the chair, but that is not going to be language that would be added to the policy. That's something that we can go ahead and work on. Thank you for your feedback. But that's something that we can go ahead and work on the procedure and making sure that we break it down a little bit. But we're not going to be able to break it down detail by detail, because that's something that we all need to work on, on creating our relationship, that we're able to work with each other and be able to communicate. Thank you.
But in this area, it should also mention that all trustees should be assigned to a committee, too, because if we don't, then we are ostracizing trustees, and trustees should all be inclusive. So the language in this policy, I think, is still minus some things that should be added, because you guys always refer back to policy, policy, policy. And I'm bringing that in, because I have no committee assignment. So, yeah, I'm definitely going to be looking at this one, that we should have the language that all trustees, as they are on all the boards, involved in policy and committees.
We thank you for your concerns. I'm going to second Garcia-Guian, and that, you know, there are... The whole working together aspect and being able to communicate is huge and key in being on a committee. So as the policy is written, I support it, and I support our chair in choosing the committees and who needs to be on them, as we, as trustees, all communicate with him on who we are comfortable working with. So I motion to...
I wouldn't mind putting some language in to have at least the trustees' opinions and talk to the chair. I know that's how we've done in the past. I know the chair has the ultimate decision, but I'd like to communicate. It wouldn't be a bad thing to put a part in the language. I mean, it's nice to have in there. It's nice to get whoever's opinion, what you want to do. I don't have any disagree. The chair has the final say on the committees, but get your input. I don't disagree with that part of it, because...
I think we all do communicate with him, what we want to be on. I don't know that we need to write into policy.
Who did the original motion?
Trustee Garcia.
So you will need to motion... amend your motion to include other language, which basically, we're going to send it back to the policy committee. So you would need to amend your motion.
My recommendation is to keep it the way that we have it right now and put it up for a vote.
Okay.
I second that.
Ready for a vote? Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
No.
Trustee Bradrick?
No.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
No.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.2.6, the J.D. Ross Extraordinary Service Award.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. Okay, I went and I asked to have who the J.D. Ross extraordinary awards were given. And yes, there were some years that had two winners on it. J.D. thought there were only one, but there is sometimes two. I'm asking that in this resolution... Or this policy, that we specifically identify the criteria for the candidates, and they must meet it. Because we had a foundation member who submitted a name, and that person did not get considered, because protocol wasn't followed. You didn't see the positioning of what was needed. That foundation member was very upset that her candidate wasn't considered. So you're trying to change this from what it was to adding more people. Okay, I understand that, and you don't want the unanimous vote. But I think you have to show the board... The committee has to come back, showing the board why you think these people are extraordinary, because we are not like a Rotary Award. We're not like a Zonta Award. We have specifics. So even if somebody won a Zonta, or somebody won a Rotary, or somebody wins Citizen of the Year, what did they do to meet our requirements? Not just doing their job, but what did they do? And I know this is spirited, because the same... One of the same candidates came up last year and this year, and I had a concern about that. And I voiced my concern to Dr. Namuo. We need to make sure that the language in this specifically states that they have to qualify with the qualifications, not just a general statement that was written, but the one that was written about Mike Clark was so detailed of everything he had and everything that he did above and beyond his job that he definitely should have been awarded, and he was, the J.D. Ross Award. And I'm going to throw that back to the two committee members, that I think you guys need to make sure that we see what the qualifications are of what we're going to approve, since you're taking it away from us doing it unanimously. We need to see that the specifics are being met. And it's not just ordinary people that are just doing their ordinary job, but they've done something extra. And all of these people... I have the list that I'd love to hand out to all of you of all the winners that got it, which I was extremely impressed with who we had that were the winners of this. And I mean, it's without a doubt, all of these people stood out, that they did something besides their normal job. And that's what I'm making this as a statement, so that we don't just put anybody just because they've won this award or that award. They need to stand out.
So you're saying that everyone on that list stands out?
They have, yeah.
So the committee's doing what it's supposed to do?
Right.
Then why?
We have a committee that does that.
But Jim, there was times where we didn't have some, and that's okay. But if we're going to... As you said, you thought I railroaded it. I didn't railroad. I didn't think that candidate had the qualifications for it. So I'm just...
So that's an opinion based on the work of a whole committee, and we have a probably another name that could have been added to that that was well deserving of the award that didn't get it, because Maureen Broderick said no. That is what the policy fixes. We are not going to derail the work of a committee and all the people that put together. They have requirements for the award, which you just said. Everyone that's won it was deserving of it.
And you can see that...
Can I please yield? I would like Kelly to say, we do have that list. And I can... Kelly, will you tell us about the qualifications and where that is and where they can find that? I believe it's in the procedure, correct? But, yeah, so... I wanted, because, yeah, she is so knowledgeable about this. Let's let Kelly tell us about this and the qualifications.
Right, and from the time I've been on the committee, there are requirements, and we do have to follow them.
She's going to expand on that.
Yeah, so this has actually been something that's been evolved in the work of the committee since I've been facilitating this process for over 10 years. And the committees, most of you, some of you have served on it with me, and you know that we have very rigorous and robust conversation about qualifications. And so over the years, we have defined the criteria, and at the kickoff meeting, do have conversations, providing each of the committee members with a book and biography of all of the people who've won the award in the past, and have a discussion about what those qualifications are, which are actually listed within this policy being supported tonight: humanitarian service, distinguished public service, scholarly work, and creative attainment. I'd also like to add that the committee is made up of seven individuals. It's a very diverse group. We have two trustees, the president, one faculty representative, one staff representative, one alum, and one community member. And these members serve two years, so there's a little bit of overlap and consistency.
May I ask one question? What is the average amount of time that each committee member puts into this process?
The average amount of time?
Yeah.
That depends on how many applicants and how many applications you're reading, I would say.
We're talking hours, maybe.
We're talking, yeah. You're...
And this is a lot of hard work, and they do their due diligence. They make their recommendation. And as the board, we should believe what they choose, so.
Well, my concern... My concern fell, and I know Kelly knows who I'm referring to, a foundation member who put somebody's name in. And the sheet was that they had whatever your questionnaire was to fill out, she said didn't... She was told it didn't meet the qualifications for that person to be submitted. Yet that person had a glorious background, from what the foundation person told me. So I'm just making sure that we're just not picking what their normal job is and that we're making sure, and the committee is making sure, that they do have the qualifications.
I'm fully confident in the process and the decision that each of the committee members have made. And in the 10 years, over 10 years I've been doing this, all of the votes on those committees have been unanimous in what is forwarded to this board.
Right. And the way it had been before, when we were... When we had our older group, they would bring... Our trustee would bring it to us and say, "Here's who we're looking at. Here's who the people are that we're considering. Is there anything outstanding that you know of this person?" So we at least had a little bit of input into it. So I'm just sharing what we had gone through, what the history was.
And you know what? As a former committee member, having gone through two years of being on this committee, I know the work that's required, and we look at everything that they've... That's been brought forward. I don't want to discredit the work of a committee, which board members are part of that committee. And so the board does have input, because that's why we have a board member on that committee. And so by us doing this now, we're undermining what the committee is doing and recommending. And so I, again, I don't want the committee to feel that the board is micromanaging or undermining them. I have full confidence in the committee that you put together and the process, so thank you.
Thank you.
As a recap, in the past, once we present someone for... To be part of this, we do share some background information, not for you all to decide, moving forward, if someone deserves a particular title, but for you all to see the qualifications. But all of this, we have already done the work as a selection committee, that it takes a lot of time and energy. So we're trying to facilitate your job by just accepting, reading, of course, asking questions if you need to, but not deciding, questions if you need to, but not deciding, because the selection committee has already made that decision and recommendation. Thank you.
Right, there have been changes, and Kelly knows that, there has been changes when, remember Andy used to bring it back to us and talk to us and tell us who was there? What you're, and I mean, I got calls all the time from whoever was on the committee, here's who we're looking at, what do you think, anything I should know about it? That was a good, you felt a good involvement in it. So I'm just sharing.
We're gonna end the discussion now and vote.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is 3.5, Board of Trustees' Approval of the 2023 Tax Levy. Motion, or I'm sorry, 3.5.1, A Motion to Suspend Rules Temporarily to Allow Public Comment on the Tax Levy.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And at this time, Karen, do we have any requests for public comments?
None that I know of.
Okay. I need a motion to return to regular session.
So moved.
Second.
And a vote.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four, 4.1, First Read into Board Policies, 4.1.1.
No, we still have to go to 3.5.4.
Sorry?
3.8, I thought was pulled. We need the approval of 3.5.4.
3.5.4?
Yeah.
Ah, the Board of Trustees' Approval of the Tax Levy, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
First Read into Board Policies, 4.1.1, Policy, Mission, and Strategy. Need a motion?
They're part of the first reading.
Just first read, no action.
No action needed on them.
At this time, then, I have a motion to table 4.1.4.
Which one?
4.1.4.
So moved. Trustee Development Budget?
4.1.4, Trustee Development Budget.
Can I ask why?
The motion tables on the table. They go straight to vote.
Gotcha. So moved.
Second. There it was, yeah, I motioned, so, second.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn?
Uh, abstain.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And a motion, I'm sorry.
So you were, you did 4 point, the budget, correct?
4.1.4, Trustee Development Budget.
Okay. Are we going to talk about the one before that? Which is the trustee development?
Discussion, can we discuss the one above that?
It's up for a first reading, I'm sorry. It's up for a first reading, it's been presented to the board, if they want to make a comment, it's section 4.1, we can start the clock and they can make their comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Trustee Broderick, 4.1.3, Trustee Development?
I just want to make sure that we are understanding that there is total support for all of us to attend and do our outreach for all of our seminars, conferences, activities, such as bottom paragraph, and that it does include the travel policy. But also, in the section of review for the orientation, I think, it says a review of board committees and their purposes, and their purposes are done by the president. I think this too should be shared by the chair, because I think the chair should also have some involvement in it, and that's what I added, is that there's some involvement of the chair. In this line, where it says, a review of board committees and their purposes, I think that really falls under the board chair more so than the president. But it should be shared, if that be the case.
Consensus? We sending this back to the committee?
It's first reading. We can go ahead and take a look.
It's first read, we can, we'll look at it, we'll add language before second, we'll talk about it, and we'll add language before a second read if-
If we add language to it, it comes back as a first read.
Okay. So, I'm personally fine with, with how it was, I believe, so-
So what I'm gonna ask is-
It's this one, when you look at, I'll make it closer to you. It's-
We'll bring it back.
Review of the board committees and their purposes.
Did you give her notes, or do you want her to send it to you?
The board committees really fall under the chair.
Okay, so the ori, this is talking about orientation for a new, for-
Newly elected.
For a newly elected trustee, and the president does put that together, and the chair is-
It's okay, there's a concern for her, Nancy's accepted it, it'll go back and we'll take it, I mean, it's not a, we're not, yeah.
No, this is where the communication opens up, that then they know what committees are, because when Diane started, she didn't know what these committees were about. And yes, Klein does explain it, but I think it's more that the chair should be saying, here, this is what these committees are, you know, and have a little bit more of a discussion about it.
And that's a valid point, because when the HLC interviewed us the other night, they asked us, did we understand things coming into the, so that's fine, that's probably, that's a good add.
Okay, so, any other?
On that one?
No, any other things that you can think of that you think that the chair should be responsible for for new trustee?
No, that's the only thing I put in there.
But you've just been here a long time, I really am asking if there's anything else you have thought about, because that you think that the chair should be responsible for, let me know.
Well, it's coming back to the first read, yeah, as I say, it's coming back to the first read, not any other, we'll revisit it again.
We'll revisit it.
I will. And then, 1.4501, Agenda Prep?
Okay.
I'm concerned, because we used to be able to see the board agenda in the initial stage before it went into print, and we used to be able to make any comments or concerns as any trustee could, not just restricted to a chair or to the president, where we could say, what about this, and talk about it, we didn't have, the 30-day wasn't really played into. The prior president allowed us to see that, as well as the prior president before that, so that if there was any concerns, because I know that you and the chair meet with Karen, and the agenda's already put together, and we don't get an idea of what's on the agenda until we get the board book, but it would be nice to see it prior to, like we did before the prior, before the final agenda goes out, in case there's anything of concern that raises us. Then you two can discuss it, but at least we are then bringing it to your attention of something that's on there, that we were used to seeing like that.
It does say in the fourth paragraph, if a trustee desires to add an agenda, an item to the future agenda for initial consideration in less than 30 days, so it does talk about and address the 30 days as well as-
No. We're gonna let you take it back, because what I think what her concern is not so much if she requests an agenda item, something that appears on the agenda we weren't expecting, haven't researched, is what she's looking for. So that there's no surprises come, you know, when the board gets there on Friday, we got it Thursday night, Friday was a holiday, the campus was closed, Monday we're already inside the agenda time window to change, that's what she's looking for.
That's what I'm looking for.
Just that there's some kind of eye-opening for us before we see an agenda that's complete.
So we want, so just so I'm clear, we want verbiage on this policy on, so that the board trustees are seeing a possible future agenda?
Like a draft?
Tentative agenda, like we used to have.
Yes.
Tentative agenda, if there's any concerns, please voice it back to them, which is what we would do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any more?
And then, I do, on the special meeting one.
4.1.7?
1.1.45.06, Special Meeting of the Board.
Okay.
It says, once states their schedule for the meeting of the board changes, canceling, whatever. When we were at the ACCT conference, they specifically said that we should never change our meetings, that once it's set, we should still continue. If we don't have a quorum, okay, then we don't have a quorum. But to change it just because, somebody said they can't be there, the board should know what's going on. So we should keep our meetings the way they are. If you can't attend, because we've had different retreats changed, we've had the one that was supposed to come up before in August, or July got changed to August, and schedules, we had to change our schedules. When we had it booked in there, I mean, you gave us the list of the tentative schedules already, it would be nice if we kept those, because we're already logging them in for work purposes and person purposes. I didn't drink yet.
I agree, except the one meeting, four people had notified Dr. Nemo that they weren't going to be there. We were bringing in someone from outside the organization to teach us.
Well, and that would be nice, that would be nice to know, but all we got was a cancellation notice, that it was canceled. If we knew and we could do a rearrangement right away, that would be nice. But it typically, they said, do not change it, if you make something as a date, keep that date, there's a reason that it's out there, and people should know about it. So I'm just saying, we've already had the schedule that was presented to us, I just think that we should make sure that that verbiage says we shouldn't be changing.
Well, again, that was-
Unless there's no quorum.
We were bringing in an outside consultant to teach us, so that's why, so-
Mr. Chairman, may I address that real quick? You have to have an allowance for a special meeting, because emergencies happen.
Yes.
And the board may have to get together on very short notice, you have to have this. There's no board that doesn't have that.
But do you think that special meetings considered are retreats too?
I don't think retreats are considered special meetings when they're planned out.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm just asking for clarification, Brian, because when I'm seeing this in here, they told us at the, at the ACCT, you shouldn't cancel any meetings, if they're set, you shouldn't cancel. If you don't have a quorum, then that's fine.
That's in reference to your regularly scheduled meetings, like we're here for tonight. That's a, that's a common guideline that people want you to follow, but sometimes emergencies happen where that has to get canceled, and I don't know if that's ever happened. But as far as your regularly scheduled meetings where you're conducting business, that's what that's in reference to.
Yeah, we had a special meeting that was called emergency to vote on the water supply that, so, yes.
So, Brian, in that regards, if you have it, that it's going to be canceled because of whatever, because, can you do then a virtual? Is that allowed, or not?
Not unless it's a state of emergencies and it's been declared by the governor.
Well, if we said it was a water emergency, would that be allowed? I'm just asking.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
If it was, let's say a water, a water situation where we had flooding or something, I'm just, I'm using that as an example. But if we had something that was an emergency situation, would we be able to?
To cancel your meeting?
Not cancel it, to have a virtual, instead of it being canceled because people can't make it.
No, you would still have to have in-person, 48-hours notice, if it can be done, but the Open Meetings Act does allow less notice than that, if it's an emergency like that that actually requires board action, because nobody can do any-
If it was an approval for finances, there was an expense of-
If, yes, if it needs to be, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, I motion to table 4.1.9.
Second.
So basically, we are adding additional language, so we don't have to vote on this.
Are we, are we tabling this?
Yes.
Then I need a second.
I second it.
Who?
Michelle.
Sorry. Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
No.
Motion carries.
Then I have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
1.45.00, Meeting of the Board. Can I just ask for clarification on this one, on the parliamentarian side? I know, Brian, you're the attorney, do you also have parliamentarian background?
Having presided or assisted boards like this for 20 years, yes.
Okay, just asking, thank you.
And I will note that I did spend a couple hours with him over my role as a chair in the meeting, so, yes.
Okay. I was just asking, because at different meetings, they want you to show that you've been, you know, identified as a parliamentarian, so I was just asking.
Yes. Now we're moving on to reports. 5.1, Student Trustee Report.
Wait, did we, okay, we did vote on this, right? It's like totally went back on there.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I stand before you this evening, a proud student of Joliet Junior College. While reflecting over the past few months, in many ways, it is significant to me how the initiatives, opportunities, and events displayed by our students, administration, and employees align with JJC's mission and strategic plan. Our students and employees haven't just talked about what they wanted to do, but we're demonstrating it, and my report is a reflection of that. And I hope that you all can see the values that our community hold. On October 11th, Dr. Irvin, along with our DEI department, and students and staff who advocated for this addition, worked diligently to celebrate the opening of our new gender-neutral bathroom located on our decon course. The addition of this bathroom in a safe, secluded, yet still accessible area has been extremely meaningful to various students. Currently, the DEI office is working to provide signage to our restroom so that students are aware of all of the available options they have. Also, on October 11th, the Office of Student Activities collaborated with our mental health and wellness staff to organize a goat yoga event. The event received an overwhelming response from students on campus, and many students expressed to me that they needed it. The students had the opportunity to participate in a short goat yoga session, make string art, enjoy a cup of chili, and visit the Hero Heroin Epidemic Relief Organization trailer. The event was attended by 164 students. We wrapped up the month of October by hosting trunk or treat. The Office of Student Activities coordinated with various student organizations and departments, resulting in over 2,785 attendees. On November 3rd through the 4th, the Office of Student Activities gathered interested student leaders to attend the ICSA Student Leadership Conference. This year, it was held at Lewis and Clark Community College. Our primary goal was to network and identify ideas that were being backed to JJC. During the conference, I attended several sessions on leadership and communication. I even participated in discussions with other students on our, what our respective colleges are doing. In the final discussion, our marketing department was applauded for their approach in utilizing students for various marketing activities. On Wednesday, November 8th, CMOS hosted their first generation celebration. The event saw 122 attendees, including students from Joliet Township High School. They even had individuals to join virtually. As a first-generation student myself, I was thrilled to be a part of the student panel, where we shared our experiences and offered advice. This past Saturday, November 11th, our women's basketball team secured its third consecutive win when they hosted Southeastern Community College and defeated the Blackhawks with a score of 69 to 61. Grace Harris was the leading scorer with 26 points and recorded eight assists. Maggie Grady scored 15 points, while Angie Knows added 11. Both players also managed to grab five rebounds each and contributed to a total of seven assists. Grace Harris was named Division III, Region IV Player of the Week for Week Two, as of Monday. She's also achieved her first career triple-double by scoring 23 points, grabbing 12 rebounds, and recording 12 assists. The Blazer, our official newspaper, has recently published their third edition for the semester. This time around, the newspaper is being run by a team of entirely new editors, who have done an amazing job providing informative content about JJC and our surrounding community. Since September, I've had the privilege of participating in President's Leadership Experience. PLE is an opportunity for the college to strengthen from a thin, as it is a voluntary program where employees establish to develop leaders, for employees establish to develop leaders who foster JJC core values. This opportunity has taught me a lot, and I was able to identify some of my strengths. I also learned that it is okay to not focus on my weaknesses. Some of the topics discussed during the program were servant leadership, the community college ecosystem, change management, leading with diversity, and productive partnerships. Through this process, I have discovered that I want to be a leader who inspires others to grow to greatness. It's International Education Week, and our DEI office in CMOS are celebrating diversity by recognizing and embracing our international students. On Monday, students participated in the Parade of Flags, parading from the Caffé Curve down to the H Center Bridge, where we enjoy, where they enjoyed food and music performed by the Sir Harvey Ensemble of Chicago. I would also like to mention that all of the flags on our C through F concourses have been updated and are brand-new, and students have noticed that. The DEI, the DEI office will be hosting a beginnings, beginnings lesson in Korean tomorrow. Students will have the opportunity to learn about the Korean language and enjoy Korean snacks. I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge our student club, Adale. The club stands for Immigrants and Dreamers Advancing in Leadership and Education. Adale offers a safe haven for undocumented and immigrant students, providing them with the supportive environment where they can feel a sense of belonging and be surrounded by community members and allies. Yesterday, student government organized a dodgeball tournament that brought together students from various clubs across campus. In preparation, it got pretty competitive among our student leaders, but it was all good fun. I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Black Student Union for emerging as the champions of the tournament and taking home the championship belt. Thank you.
Can I make a quick comment? I would like to do her report before Dr. Nemo.
I was gonna say, either she prepared his, or he copied off of hers, I'm not sure. Item 5.2, Representative to the JJC Foundation, Ms. Amanda Quinn. I've been teasing Amanda for a while, because I saw her show up at one meeting, she wasn't here to speak, and she was busy, stepped in, and she left right away. And I told her, I was highly insulted that she left right after the meeting started, so we moved her to-
You put me at the end.
We put her at the end.
All right. The JJC Foundation Board actually met this morning for our annual meeting, so it's been[1722.41]
so it's been a long day for Dr. Muwo and I. We had a 7:30 meeting this morning. And I'm just sharing a few highlights from that meeting, not the whole presentation, I promise. And the most, the main thing I wanted to talk about...
Where's the...? There it is.
That a large portion of our annual fundraising dollars, about 25% to 30%, come between the month of November and January. So I want to show you some of the initiatives that we are doing, and then I wanted you to see them on the screen so you could see what they actually look like. We continue to incorporate stewardship initiatives into our fundraising efforts. Probably gonna make you hungry with these muffins on the screen, but earlier this month, we delivered muffins to some of our donors. A JJC culinary alumna started a business called Sugar Shack Cookie Co. in New Lennox, and we liked the idea of supporting her, highlighting her work, and giving a small gift of appreciation to our donors. So we do various things like this throughout the year. We're not just asking people for money all the time. We like to show that we actually appreciate them and like to be able to go meet with them and learn more about them. This is our actual, this is our annual endowment report. It's actually gonna be delivered, mailed to our endowment donors probably sometime next week. They should be in my office, delivered to me to put together tomorrow. This year's piece highlights scholarship recipients and spotlights Kyle Connors, a student that has dreams to become a teacher. The Endowment Activity Report provides detailed information on the donor's scholarship endowment, including the principal balance, any additional gifts that were given to that endowed scholarship, appreciation allocation. Actually, this year, the Foundation Board gave a 2.5% appreciation allocation to all scholarships to the principal balance. Then also the payout amount from the previous fiscal year, and then the payout allocation that's actually being distributed. Many of them have already for the fall semester, so very exciting. Typically, we pay out 4% of the principal balance of the endowment, so our donors like to see that. We also include an envelope if they'd like to add to that principal balance. Our year-end appeal is really what brings in the majority of the funds, along with the endowment report, at the end of the calendar year, and it's mailed to alumni and friends probably in the next two weeks, and actually highlights five scholarship recipients. There will also be a digital... Here's a couple pages of the booklet that we'll be sending out. There will be a digital component as well to the piece that highlights faculty alumni that give generously to the foundation. As we close out our 50th anniversary, we wanted to create a fundraising initiative that was not only fun, but also commemorates the year, and this resulted in Bobblehead Wiley. He's actually in person here by Maureen's spot. This Wiley was actually designed by one of our graphic designers, Sean McGowan. He's also an alum of JJC, so we're very excited. He actually molded the head out of clay for the company that put it together. The fundraiser will benefit the 50th Anniversary Endowed Scholarship, which we, our goal was to get that endowed at the $50,000 for the year, for 50th anniversary this year, and we're already probably around $65,000 with, $65,000 with this initiative. So if you want to buy a Bobblehead Wiley, you can scan that QR code right now or use jjc.edu/bobble, and they're $25 apiece. The last thing I wanted to do is just give you a heads up on our 2024 JJC Foundation events. Our golf outing will take place on Friday, July 12th, at the Creek and Morris. We don't have a 50th anniversary anymore this year, so we gotta go back to our Night of Stars event, which will be Thursday, September 12th, and we'll be back at the Renaissance Center this year. Our 5K will take place on Sunday, October 6th, and our Holiday Pop-Up Photo Walk with Santa and Friends will be Thursday, December 3rd. We do still have an event, which is our Holiday Pop-Up Photo Walk with Santa and Friends for 2023, and that actually takes place on Thursday, the 30th. So if anyone would like to attend, it's jjc.edu photograph, and it's $5 per person to attend, and there's lots of goodies and things for everyone. Before I go, I know it's always important to share the scholarship information. Our scholarship application for the spring semester is open right now, and we have over 100 scholarships to give out, and that's, we actually have more. That's just the names of the scholarships, so many of them have multiple scholarships. That closes on November 30th for the spring semester, so please encourage people to apply. And then the next full Foundation Board meeting will take place actually via Zoom in January, on January 17th at 7:30 a.m. Yes?
Give me that QR code again, I gotta go.
Oh, I like it, I like it. I was hopin... I was hoping somebody would utilize it, so I threw it up there. Any questions for me on the... Yeah?
Real quick, so thank you for all the information and the scholarship information. I don't know if it's your department, or maybe the admissions, or somebody. Do we connect with all of our feeder high schools somehow to like let the counselors know that our scholarships are open for the spring, so they can let students know that they need to start applying now for this? Like, I don't know, again, if it's your department, there just has a connection with the high schools, or if it's another, somebody else in admissions that does that?
Yeah, we connect with admissions, but also Kelly Baker, she's our scholarship specialist. She goes to our counselor breakfast and provides all of that information, flyers in both English and Spanish, and then the dates for both the fall semester and the spring semester.
Thank you. When is the, when is that breakfast take place?
Oh, that, uh, when was that? It was not that long ago. I think it was in October, September, October.
So we still have that breakfast, right? We still do that?
It's, they, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. She went to it and she presented to them, so, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And as a parent of a high schooler, I have received that information from the high school in the, in the weekly message, so it's getting out there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And it is, I've seen it in the Joliet, Lockport, and Lincoln Way, they've had it. So when they announce College Night, they announce scholarship information, and I know that that's been brought up.
Yes, for sure. Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item 5.3, Representative to the ICCTA slash ACCT, Ms. Michelle Lee.
All right, so we, as I kind of went over last time, so if you're new, I watched a few months ago when I introduced the ICCTA. No, I'm just playing. The ICCTA is the Illinois Community College Trustee Association. We had a conference, and so when we first get there, we have roundtable discussion. Our two roundtable topics that we talked about this time were how is AI being discussed or dealt with on college campuses, classrooms, and administration? So with the chatbot and things like that, it was definitely an interesting conversation. I am sure you all are already on top of that and at the forefront of the AI discussion, but it was definitely an intriguing and interesting discussion. And then the other roundtable discussion was how many colleges have not adopted a DEIB policy or directive? I did not know what the B stood for. It stands for belonging. So I think there was actually, most of the colleges have a DEI policy, but nobody knew what the B was. So there was a, kind of got off-topic because we ended up talking about mainly the B and what that meant and adding that in. And then there was a luncheon where there was an emeritus award given to Governor Pritzker, and he mentioned Maureen by name in his speech. So definitely gonna give her some kudos there, I guess, and just mention her as well. And then there was, we had a seminar. Actually, I, I had questions myself and as well as other trustees from other colleges on this actual seminar, just because it was about ERPs. And so we were all kind of wondering as trustees, is it really appropriate for us to be having a seminar on ERPs when we really aren't in that process? And is that kind of crossing our line and our boundary as a trustee? So there actually was some topic, but I actually found it very informative, and the panelists were very informative. And we may not have a whole lot to do with that process, but I think that it is such a big process, kind of just knowing a little bit about more about it and knowing what goes into it might have actually been a little bit helpful before that whole process. So I was, so in the end, I do think that it was valuable to learn a little bit more about the ERP process. I just am gonna share with you really quick that Bruce Vleiman, if I butcher your name, I'm so sorry, is kind of funny, and I think that everybody here, after what we've been through, maybe you need this. He compared an ERP process to the Five Stages of Greed. So if anybody needed that, I thought, I thought he was pretty amazing for that, and I thought he was funny. So the other thing, we, and then we go to our committee meetings. I am on the Awards Committee meeting and the Public Relations, Public Relations Committee did not have an update, but the Awards Committee wants me to tell everyone to get out there and apply for these awards at the ICCTA, ACCTA, so they are sent to Klein. Klein should push them out. I don't know, Kelly, if you could help me with media with that, on pushing those out so that our college and our staff and our faculty are putting people in, and applying for those award positions. I would really appreciate that. And then I am going to yield to Diane if she, she is a part of the Diversity Committee. She's also on the Awards Committee. I don't know if you have anything to add to the Awards Committee, but she is also on the Diversity Committee.
I'm not on the Diversity Committee.
Oh, you aren't? I thought you were on the Diversity Committee. It's, so what two committees are you on? I know we're on the awards together. What's your other committee?
That's the only one. I'm just the vice president of the award, that's all.
Sorry. Did you have anything to add?
Well, you kind of, you kind of added. I will say a few things, just echo what you said. They do want us to push for awards for all of the colleges. I was just gonna, last time, I didn't have enough time, but I wanted to go over the names of the awards and just to let you know the dates that they'll, the information will be coming. I don't know if I'll have that much time, but, but anyway, there's an Equity and Diversity Award. There's an Outstanding Full-Time Faculty Member Award, Professional Board Staff Member Award, Ray Hursting Trustee Achievement Award, and those go directly to the ACCT. And then there's one for the Gandhi-King Peace Scholarship, Greg Chadwick Student Service Scholarship, and then it goes into Business Industry Partnership Award, Distinguished Alumni Award, Gary Davis Ethical Leadership Award, G.G. Campbell Student Trustee Excellence Scholarship, Lifelong Learning Award, Outstanding at Junk Faculty Member Award, Paysetter Award, and Paul Simon Student Essay. So all of these, hopefully, we will get some nominees from our Joliet Junior College. And they do say that we, the materials will be received, and we have a deadline, and hopefully, we will follow the deadline, strict qualifications and strict, I should say, strict requirements. So we hope to get some great talent out of Joliet Junior College, but thank you.
Anything from the Finance Committee on the ICCTA?
Balanced, balanced budget, so everything works good. They're still looking at the website of going back because the ACCT wants to acquire our website, and we are searching for the proper website to put up and looking for the ACCT to supply us with the cost factor that it would cost for us to go with a new website. And we think it would be probably beneficial because it's, the Illinois, it's called Illinois Community Colleges, and we'd like to have the ICCTA. And there's one, one company that has it that hasn't used it in over a year, so they're supposed to be engaging with that company to see if they can get it moved to us. So we're hoping that it doesn't cost any more than 10 bucks, but if there is a cost factor on the ACCT, so they'd cover it with us.
Thank you. Thank you, and I yield back to you, Jim.
Thank you. Item 5.4, Trustee Updates, and we'll start on this side of the room, Trustee Ellis.
I have no updates.
Trustee Mahalik.
I have no update.
Trustee Garcia again?
No, sir, no updates. Thank you.
I'll just give you a little bit of an update. At the conference that we had, the governor was the first time that we've had a governor win this award. It was an emeritus award, and it's been out there for 30 years, and it's the first time a governor did win it. And Governor Pritzker was very supportive of higher education and made note of how we have nationally exceeded enrollment expectations. We're 5.7 enrollment increase, better than the national. And he was very proud that it was Illinois that was doing it, so he's taking that credit for it. And I thought that was great that he mentioned that. Then we also had our Secretary of State, Alexi Gianakoulas.
Genoulias.
Okay, Genoulias. It's a hard name to say.
Genoulias.
Genoulias, okay. Well, I'm not good with my Greek, so bear with me. I kept saying he was Alexi, our Secretary of State, because I could not say that last name. But he was up there too, supporting everything that we do for the community colleges and that he will always have a focus on it, and it was great. And then, just to give you a heads up, I did talk to the President's Group, and we did talk about the enrollment increase nationally too. We talked about 10.5% growth in technical and more people back to campus, and that the job market is strong, and there's an 8% in increase in transfers due to dual credit and enrollment, which was given credit for. And they definitely were talking about the transfer process that came up as a huge issue and the backglow, which was a huge issue. And I got introduced to them and let them know how we love the partnership. And then in the meeting that we had on Saturday, our CEO of the ICCTA gave us the shortage of nurses. There's a faculty shortage, and they're coming trying to do some bipartisan bills that would help increase the money for the nursing staff because they see that there's not enough money with the nurses, and I'm sure, Amy, you're aware of that. Thank you.
Trustee Lee, any final report?
No.
Trustee Harris, any final report?
I dare not say anything.
We're past 9 o'clock.
No, I was just gonna say, I am not part of the DEI with ICCTA, but I could be if you need someone. So that's all.
Thank you. Do you have anything for us before we go, sir?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we add anything to the agenda?
That was what the trustee update was just for.
Oh, sorry, then I was gonna, there should be something added, if you don't mind.
What did you need to add?
I think that we should go back and add the comments about the trustee. We need to go through the trustee. There needs to be something on the trustee expenditures. And most of the colleges, so you know, and I did this as a workout in regards to the trustee stuff. Last year, we had over 11,10932 not used for it, okay? This year, we are at, and where's my numbers? Bear with me. That's the black book. Okay, last year, we only used 29% of our budget. This year, we still have 62% unused. Most of the colleges that I've talked to, and I know, Jim, you had put the budget thing on hold to delay, but most of the colleges now are doing it where it's a lump sum so that there's no, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do this because you've used your funds. They're saying everybody should, they never turned down, all the chairs said they never turned down anyone for going from a chamber event or an ACCT event or an ICCTA event, as long as there's money in there. And unfortunately, last year, we couldn't use that 11,000 because of the fact of Workday wouldn't allow us to do it. Per, remember, Karen, when we brought it up that we couldn't use it? You don't remember, you don't remember that? Well, Workday would not allow us to use that to register for our ACCT September or October convention because it was in last year's budget. But we have a lot of money that we have, and I did notice when I was looking at the budget from last year and that, and, you know, I looked at what it said. Last year, all of us had about 2750, and I'm still trying to figure out, there should be more investigation. Last year, Alicia got 4427 increase. She had an increase, and I don't know why. And I think we also need to look at the ACCT, ICCTA account because I've gone back to Jeff, to Jeff May, who was the prior ICCTA person, and me, which covers over 25 years, and it was only for the person that was the delegate of the ICCTA and the alternate delegate were the ones that got to use the funds, or him as the president of the ICCTA. So I think that all those years, it has never been where we have one person that's ICCTA, ACCT. They've always been the same person, and it's always been those funds. It's not the vice or the chair. They may have been in that role, but it was not because of that. It was because, so we need to reopen that and discuss it fully.
And that's why that policy's been set aside, and I will caution you to not keep comparing us to the policies and procedures of other colleges when we have our own. That is why that's going back to the Policy Committee as it, you know, suits us. I don't really care what other colleges do as long as we stay in line with the policies that we put together. And that's what we have the Policy Committee for.
It's sharing information, and that's all it is, is sharing information, Jim.
Each time you share, you're knocking what our Policy Committees are doing.
I'm not knocking, I'm not knocking, I'm sharing.
You know, saying this is how other people do it, or we've always done it in the past. Let's look at our policies. We're gonna govern, govern this college based on the policies. That's what we're limited to. We don't benchmark what other people have done. We can, when we're writing policies, and that would be the Policy Committee does that. They can look at, you know, for best practices, but those best practices may not be what's right for us.
Well, just so you know, it has always been the best practice of this college that if someone needed funds to be put into their account, it was put into their account. It wasn't a board vote. It was put into their account so that it would be able to them to do it. to do it, because some are more active than other trustees.
That's not what the policy says, though.
It may not be what it says, but last year...
Karen, when we just went through that policy, we did not change any verbiage, I don't believe, as of yet. We may have, I, so, I don't even believe for that to be, have stated as true for that policy, because of the fact that we actually, if you look at it, anything that's changed is crossed out, and nothing is crossed out on that policy, so I'm not sure that that policy has ever changed. But we are over time, and the buzzer has gone off, so unless anybody else wants to talk about the budget policy, I motion to adjourn the meeting.
I asked for this to be put on the agenda, that we have this, with this information for the ICCT and the budget issue that we, I didn't have a chance to talk about, that I did all my scribbles for, that we didn't get.
There's a motion, you need a second?
We need a second?
Alicia seconded.
Second, so we have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.